Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Sorry, let us get a couple of minutes late here in getting started. But welcome to the June 15, 2022, meeting of the City of Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We'll call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum present this afternoon. Our first item of business is to approve minutes from the May 4, 2022, meeting, and that is just a revision to the minutes we approved last time because we missed something. And we've got to fix that. And then to also approve the May 18, 2022, Planning Commission meeting minutes. So if everybody had a chance to kind of review that. Any other questions, problems? Otherwise, we just need a motion for approval on both of those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Then also, we have our consent agenda, which again, you all had the opportunity to review that ahead of time. Did anybody have any items on the consent agenda that they would like to have removed for further discussion?
There are none. I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have our GDO section. We have several items on here today, five, I believe. First item is Puckett Creek Station GDO Master Plan Amendment for 12 lots on 27.5 acres, zoned CH and GDO1, located along Fortress Boulevard, Manson Pike, Cedar Glades Drive, and Manson Crossing Drive. Puckett Creek Station LLP is the developer. Ms. Green, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chairman Jones and Planning Commission members. Our first item under the Gateway portion of our agenda today is for you to consider an amendment for a master plan. The next item is closely related to this one because they both deal with the same properties. So this one's for master plan amendment, and item B is for a preliminary plat for a future road. But those of us who've been around for a while may remember that there was a planned development in this area along Fortress Boulevard before the avenues, and then after the avenues came, that was amended. And then the property was just rezoned to bulk zoning of commercial highway district and multifamily residential district, with some portions of it remaining in a planned development. So this property was master planned. There was an area, though, shown in the master planning that was called reserved for future development, and that's what's outlined on the screen before you. There's an ortho map, and you can see it's undeveloped. The Walmart Neighborhood Center is the large building, and then there's a car wash, a Camino Real, and a Sonic, so that probably helps you understand where we are. The property here is what is reserved for future development. The Development Group, Puckett Creek Station, is ready to move forward with development of the remainder of the property and wanted to submit plaits for review. This property is located in the Gateway Design Overlay District, which does require a master plan for lots, showing how the lots will be laid out, road connections, shared access points. Any private streets would be required to be lit and to have elements along them for sidewalks and utilities. And so now we have a plan for the development of this property. And so that'll be this next page. The plan also includes some modifications to the existing stormwater pond. The developer wants the design aesthetic to be changed a little bit, so that will be a part of future plans, of course, not this one. When this was initially submitted, staff had a lot of comments on the master plan, but they've been able to address most of those. One very important aspect of this master plan is the final puzzle piece. I'll go back to the ortho because it's a little bit better, to continue the road so that it does line up to Bill Smith Drive. It's been, we've had plans approved for that road before, it was never constructed. So the developer is ready to move forward with the completion of that road, and it will serve this development. Of course, I think, we think it'll provide options for the other portions of this development that have already happened, the apartments and townhomes and single-family. This developer will also be contributing a portion of the costs for signalization here. And so that will also be helpful in the planning for this properties. This plan is in relatively good order. Staff would recommend that you approve it today, subject to all staff comments.
Okay. Any questions, or Ms. Green, or any comments?
There are none. I make a motion, we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Our next item is also on Puckett Creek Station, Manson Crossing Drive, preliminary, oh, right-of-way, Manson Crossing Drive, right-of-way, preliminary plat for road construction and dedication of 1.88 acres, zoned CH and GDO1, located along Manson Crossing Drive. Puckett Creek Station is the developer. Ms. Green.
Thank you very much. As I mentioned, this plan is for the preliminary plat to create that road extension, to make that final piece of the puzzle fit within this development. The Planning Commission did originally review and approve a preliminary plat for this road construction, and I did include a copy of those. I believe they were from 2018, and I included a copy of those in the materials. The engineer was able to address most of staff comments, so our recommendation is that you do recommend approval of this, subject to all staff comments. As I mentioned, it does include a contribution toward a signal at Bill Smith Drive and Manson Pike.
Okay.
Motion for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next item, also, Puckett Creek Station. This is Lot 9, a final plat for one lot on one acre, zoned commercial highway and GDO1, located along Cedar Glades Drive. Puckett Creek Station LLP is the developer. Uh, Ms. Aguilera, how are you this afternoon?
I'm well-rested, Chair Jones. You guys won't have to worry about me leaving early, all tired. So I'm just warning you all, though, I didn't bring my sleeping bag, so if we're going to be staying here late, I would like to get a forewarning. But yes, this is a, this item is a continuation of the Puckett Creek Station. This is Lot 9 of the Puckett Creek, as Margaret Ann was showing previously. This is the area located in the southern portion of it here. This item had previously been submitted to the Planning Department for the April 20 Planning Commission Review Cycle, but was given courtesy comments and required to re-submit at a future date. Per the standards of the zoning ordinance, they're first required to submit a master plan amendment so that we can see how the remainder of the, the remainder area is going to be developed, which is what Margaret Ann Green was just talking about with the infrastructure in the area. It is required that they submit a master plan amendment prior to the approval and recording of a final plat, and that is the reason why we are seeing it here today. The plat was in generally good order. Staff was able to work within the initial submittal. And then again, here in the second submittal, we did not find any issues. So with the submittal of the master plan amendment, staff was able to review and found no issues with this, and found it to be in good order, and recommends that this final plat be subject, be approved, subject to all staff comments. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Aguilera?
I'll make a motion, we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item D is North Church LLC, Lot 2, Holiday Inn Express, initial design review of a 60,000 square foot hotel, located on 3.3 acres, zoned MU and GDO1, located along Medical Center Parkway and Robert Rose Drive. Pradeep Agnathura, I'm, you're just going to have to tell me how to say the last name, sorry, developer. Ms. Green.
We call him Deep for short. He was Deep, pretty deep, Deep. Agna Hotry, but I'm sure he'd be happy for you to call him Deep. The developer here is, as you mentioned, is interested in constructing a hotel. It's a Holiday Inn Express. Mr. Agna Hotry does have other hotels in our community, and even another one in the Gateway Design Overlay District portion of our community. The property that he's interested in is actually two separate lots of record, which you have recently reviewed, a subdivision platform, combines those two lots into one lot of record. And if you see on the screen, the outline of the lot, it shows them as two now, and then it show, you can see that there is a shared access drive to Medical Center Parkway and a shared access drive to Robert Rose Drive. So this lot has two fronts. In the gateway, of course, we require four-sided architecture, so they, they will have four-sided architecture. But I did want to mention that the front of the structure is oriented toward Medical Center Parkway, which is the street with the higher functioning classification, and in this case, is the better street to be oriented toward. They did work to design the site so that it does have a proper terminus view from the Medical Center Parkway side as well. The hotel itself has 109 rooms and offers, does offer some food, but it's not a restaurant, so there's no additional parking required for restaurants, since it's just breakfast for people who are staying at the Holiday Inn Express. The site will also incorporate some electric vehicle charging stations, which you're going to see on site plans every month for a while now. There is a push to install these at gas stations and just have them at hotels and schools and places where people are going. And so we've been reviewing those structures and their location and making sure they don't impede the sidewalk by running cords across the sidewalk where you can't get through, and reviewing the type of structures that are located on these sites. Some of them can be very large, have giant solar panels and TVs, and then some are more modest. And the one proposed with this hotel is a blink charger, and it is, it's, I think, the least obtrusive of all the ones that I've been shown. In any case, this site is a little different because they are reserving a pad for a future building, and so I've got the site plan up on the screen. The hotel is in the center, but if you look in this area, you can see that there's parking surrounding it that's going to be constructed. Utilities run there, but they're going to leave a pad there. I have discussed the potential uses with the developer, and we really don't think that a restaurant will be able to make it work there because a restaurant does have some of our most intensive parking requirements. So they have been talking to various types of offices or medical offices that might like to locate there. Certainly, a drive-through wouldn't fit because they don't have enough space, but, but in the future, you can expect something to come back to you. They are required, of course, to keep the site camped in the meantime. I hope, I'm going to invite the architect to the lectern just a moment. It's H. Michael Heineman, but Lydia is new to us, but I think she's done a really good job on this hotel, so I'm going to ask her to come to lectern and go through the architecture of the site. I'll hand you the material board to pass around. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. This is initial design review, so the focus is on architecture. They will come back to you in the future for a second review, but if you have any feedback, we'd appreciate it today, so we incorporate that in the recent models in the future. But before Lydia comes up, do you have any questions about the site? From me? Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
Hello. Good afternoon to all. My name is Lydia Lazandich, and I'm on behalf of H. Michael Heineman Architects from Brentwood, Tennessee. I'm part of designing team who was working on design of this new hotel building, and I'm here to answer any of the questions that you might have. Or I can try to guide you.
Do you mind lifting the microphone up a little bit?
Sorry.
Thanks.
Better?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I can try to guide you through what our designing process was. The building that you see in front of you, that is the plan for the building, was, is a result of us trying to answer to several different requirements that we had, from IAG brand, that's this greater brand that Holiday Inn Express and Sweets belongs to, that had their own prototype set of plans, as well as our clients' wishes, demands, including the site requirements as well, the location we're planning to build on, and all the design guidelines of Murfreesboro and Gateway Overlay. The materials we used are mostly masonry, as you can see, high-quality materials, cast stone, light-colored champagne, and a darker color brick. We tried to emphasize the entrance, as you can see, and I'll try to just, okay. So the entrance is completely in cast, in cast stone, with portico cherry inviting people and being very visible and welcoming. The rest of the building is mostly brick, where we also have some cast stone in the base of the building that sits at 14 feet high. On the corners of the building, you'll see some more cast stone that serves as, as anchors to the whole, this long, faceted building. This way, these towers on the corner of the building are also serving us to screen all the rooftop HVAC equipment. If I can scroll. Here we are. This corner and this corner right here, the opposite corners of the building on the rooftop, we are having HVAC units and parapet walls screening them. They sit at the height of approximately 56 feet.
Any concerns?
Do you anticipate, I mean, I don't do very good with drawings, but just looking at the Holiday Inn that's out a little bit further, it looks, just looking at the pictures, it looks very similar to that. Are you familiar with that one? Is it, is it going to look similar to that one?
It is similar, but it's not the same. I wish I had it right here for comparison. Maybe similar in colors and materials, but I think this is a very different building that's quite unique in its location. It obviously follows the very similar order of having distinct base, body, and cap of the building.
I think it looks fine.
Yeah. I think it fits the aesthetic for the area.
I've got, I've got a question, not for her.
Mr. Lenz, I've got, if cable can pull up my computer, I've got the street view image.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking, yeah. It looks like it's going to be.
This one's nicer.
Yeah, okay.
I would tend to agree.
The one that I pulled up has the night view, kind of a dusk view, and I need you anyway, so, but, you know, it's got the lights on at the Holiday Inn, the picture that I have, and the lights make it look really good, too, but I don't know what this one has for lights, our new one, but. I had a question just about the parking, just to make sure I'm understanding that. Let me get back to that screen. So we've got 109 rooms with 126 total parking spaces, so we're 17 over, you know, whatever in some form or fashion between electric and accessible. Is that going to include all of the parking that's there for the commercial pad as well? So that, that commercial pad is basically going to have a 17-spot number, whatever they can fit in there. Is it, is it, are there many uses that are reasonable for that size of a commercial spot to have 17? I mean, you know, just, I guess, just trying to think out loud here, just, are we, I don't want to open the door, you know, I don't care if we open the door that much, I guess, I just kind of thinking, I just don't want to put us in a position where somebody who's sitting here one or two or five years down the road is like, well, we can't do anything, we never could sell it for anything, so now, you know, this is the only thing we're ever going to be able to do here, is a drive-through restaurant, and so we got to put the, the drive-through right next, and we need, and actually, you know, we're going to, you know, underpark.
Sure, so offices require 1 to 300, and the building is 2,500 square feet, so there's, there's plenty of option. I mean, you may get somebody thinking, oh, it's not fair, I can't put a restaurant there, but we're having the conversation early and saying, without some kind of, some other solution, restaurant won't work, but at 1 to 300, there are plenty of options, and we have numerous uses in our chart that could go there. And I don't want a pad to sit there vacant either. Deep, is working on having it, somebody kind of come quicker, but we have to look at it like it's going to be long-term, and certainly, our comments reflected that.
Okay. Yeah, good, that's, that's exactly what I needed.
Sure.
That's a good point.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying.
Existing building, I thought you were going to talk about the green colors on the building. Our zoning ordinance does say white light is required. The green light on the other building is either down or almost going to be down, and this building is going to only have white light to comply with our zoning ordinance.
I didn't know it was green.
Well, you're talking about nighttime, and I thought, I think I see where he's going, but you took a turn for me.
Everybody picks on that, especially Matt.
I forget.
All right, I'm, I'm good, y'all. I'll make a motion, we approve it with, subject to all staff comments.
A second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next, we are moving on to item E. This is Clary Park, Lot 20, Main Event. It's initial design review of 48,808 square foot commercial indoor amusement, located on six acres, zoned CH, GDO1, and GDO2, located along Gresham Park Drive. Main Event is the developer. Ms. Green.
Thank you. I think Mr. Blomley likes to point out that I need to pull the microphone down very low. Somebody's taller than me, he likes to bring it up, but I'm fine.
No comment.
Our next item is a, for a lot that's a part of the Clary Park development. It is Lot 20 on the master plan, and this is the lot that we've, it's zoned commercial highway, and it's also located in the Gateway Design Overlay District, GDO1 and 2. Have the property on the screen, and you can see that there is, there is an existing drive to Gresham Park Drive, and Gresham Park is one word, not two, that they will be utilizing. It's adjacent to the McDonald's, and so hopefully, that helps orient you. And then you can see to the north is some property separating this parcel from Wilkinson Pike, and that property is a location of some of the townhomes and single-family detached that you've already reviewed, I think in March, you reviewed a site plan for. So this is the initial design review for this site, and I believe that the Heinz team represented some time back, that they were interested in an entertainment facility, entertainment, this might be a better word, but to be located here, and so the project that they're bringing to you is called Main Event. I am certain their marketing team doesn't want me to say this, but it's like Dave and Buster's, but not really, maybe younger Dave and Buster's. Dave and Buster's seems to be a lot of adults and a lot of drinking, and this is probably not quite that heavy. And so it's, in our zoning ordinance, we look at parking. Councilwoman Lelance, it's always our first or second question when we review developments. And so this one, early on, we identified the use as commercial indoor amusement, but the design team did want us to consider some options that I'll be discussing in just a few minutes. I did want to, since this initial design review, go through the building. I think that from what they initially came to us with, to what they're showing today, they've come a really long way. They've increased the amount of brick on the building, and I think with buildings and uses like this, I'd say movie theaters or these large boxes, sometimes it can be difficult to meet our design guidelines because they can't have the windows that we need, and we do have transparency requirements. Also, the scale is so large. And so I think what they've done on the sides to meet our design guidelines and our, our gateway restrictions has been creative. They are creating some void spaces with the use of recessed bricks and panels, and of course, they'll come up and go through those, but it, you know, it is always a struggle on these type uses to get there, but we, in the gateway as a community, have spent millions of dollars to develop it, and we're very interested in, in keeping that high standard. And so I think that they've done a good job breaking up that facade. They do want you to consider an alternative material on the fronts. I'm trying to think of how I can zoom in here. So where you see this pattern, it looks like wood, they're asking for you to consider roll fab metal. The Gateway Design Overlay District says that buildings need to be primarily rock, stone, or brick, not cement, not, not masonry, but rock, stone, or brick. Secondary materials are identified as stucco or synthetic stucco, glazed curtain walls, integally colored split face blocks, cementitious composition siding, so like a hardy plank. And so initially, when I had the conversations, I asked them to replace the roll fab metal with a nichihau or cementitious siding that had the same effect, but they were really interested in using this type of material. And so we asked them to come to Planning Commission and present it to you and let you decide if it's appropriate here, the roll fab metal, and I'm sure they have more information that they can provide for you, and I'm going to have some samples. I have the sample board and just a sample of the metal to pass around. Of course, when we look at it, we're thinking about durability, holding up over time, and also aesthetics and quality, but I'm going to pass that around to you. There are two things that staff would like you to discuss, in addition to anything else that you think is appropriate. One is the use of roll fab metal as a secondary material. It's not a primary material in the building, but as a secondary material. And the second is they're requesting, because our, our parking ratios, they believe are rather high based on studies elsewhere, they're asking for some shared parking agreement. So what I'm going to do is let Mr. Taylor go through the details of those. I did print off some pages from our zoning ordinance. One is the definition of floor area. I highlighted it, the areas to look at, and it talks about the areas inside a building that can be excluded from the floor area calculations, and we calculate, our parking is based on floor area in Murfreesboro. And then the second is the shared parking agreement. So these are, these are just pages from the zoning ordinance that talk about what authorities you have to approve, so we believe it's within your ability to approve it, but did, Mr. McKnight did want this to come to you for you to consider. So I'm going to give it over to Mr. Taylor and the architect. I'm going to pass you the material board, roll fab metal and parking, please, and thank you.
So, Margaret Ann, give us an idea of, I'm not familiar with this term, this roll flat metal. Is there a building you can, that's in Murfreesboro, that you could give us an idea of what we're talking about here that's on the building?
We, I can't think of roll fab metal. I can think of metal being used in the gateway, and it's a Luca Bond is what we've used, and it's at car dealers. Generally, when I review metal, determining whether it's appropriate or not, I look at, what happened to my?
She gave you one of those again.
Oh, my metal was dented, they probably don't want you to see that. A Luca Bond actually has a backing on it, so part of the thing you think about metal is you want it to be rigid, because it can, Russell, you probably can describe it better than me, it can warp over time, or, or, oil canning is what like corrugated metal does, which is why we don't allow it, and creates like a weird effect. But a Luca Bond has an actual rigid, something behind it to keep it from moving, and so we have allowed a Luca Bond on like car dealers. This roll fab metal in the gateway, I'm not sure that I think of an area that we've, we've used it or outside the city, but I'll pass this sample around for you to look at.
And is it metal that looks like wood?
I mean.
Is that why it looks like wood on our picture? Oh, okay, yeah, I got you, I got you.
You can do tile, you can do nichihau, you can do metal that looks like wood, or you can do real wood. We don't like real wood.
So are you saying, is this finish going to, like, is it going to easily chip off, or, I mean?
Or fade?
I don't know as much about the product as they do.
So we've got the architect, so we'll let him talk about the material. I'll walk you through the site real quick and then walk you through the parking, and I'll let him talk about the specifics of that particular material and maybe a few more details about the building itself. But I've got myself, the architect, as well as the client representative here today. This is on Lot 20 of the Clary Park subdivision. This use is consistent with what we talked about during the putt process. We'd always talked about this being a entertainment-type use at this location, and so Main Event had expressed interest in this lot long before the zoning was in place. As Margaret Ann said, this is similar to a Dave and Buster's or locally an LTA, just for some comparison sake. Just for some comparison sake, LTA's building is about 49,000 or 50,000 square feet in size, and they've got about 200 parking spaces on site. And I think their uses are very consistent on the inside. They've got restaurant, bowling alley, arcade, and so I think that's exactly what you'll see here as well, is we've got about five different uses that we've classified, working with staff on the inside of the building. We've got some office space, which is, you know, managerial type procedures. We've got some retail space where you go and collect your prizes for some of your arcades. You've also got a restaurant, you've got a 22-lane bowling alley, and then you've got some indoor amusement, the laser tag. So I think all of those are very consistent with what you'll see at those other two uses that we mentioned earlier. We do have one access point on Gresham Park Lane. We're installing a right turn lane at that location, and we've also got another access point onto the private drive that's located behind McDonald's and Rooms to Go. This use was included in the overall subdivision's traffic impact study as that was going through the rezoning process as well. We are installing sidewalks along both Gresham as well as the private drive, and have a pedestrian connection from the building out to that sidewalk as well. We've got landscape buffers on the north and the east side of the project, that's where we abut the residential portion of Clary Park. And then we've got formal open space spread across the front of our site, as well as really concentrated at the intersection of the private drive in Gresham Park. We're still working through a few of those details with Ms. Green, but we'll have those in order for the final design review. Stormwater, we are utilizing an underground detention system on the north and east side of our site, and that would discharge into the townhouse site, where that will go through their stormwater detention areas as well. And all that's been coordinated with them and planned from the get-go. The front of our building does face Gresham Park, but I think we very much have four-sided architecture. You can tell where the front door is, it's got a nice walk-up canopy, it's got a little different color there, so it's very distinct and sets itself apart, all of which I think the GDO promotes and demands. As far as the uses and the parking that Ms. Green mentioned earlier, we have worked very extensively with staff on the parking. If you go strictly by the ordinance, I think we are required about 440 spaces. My client, if they could fill 440 spaces, they would absolutely want to build those. What they have seen across all their sites is they do not need that much parking to utilize their building. And so what we've done here is taken the approach inside the zoning ordinance for a shared parking agreement, and outlined how many spaces are required by that, and how many we need for our use. And so we've used a 30% reduction, which is similar to what we've used on, I think, the One East College project, maybe one or two others around town. So we will execute an agreement prior to, I think it's prior to building permit is what staff has asked, that'll get recorded to demand of that. Just for some reference, as I mentioned earlier, LTA's a similar sized building, they're about 49,000 or 50,000, we're right under 49,000 square feet. They've got about 200 spaces, we're providing about 310, maybe 315 with handicap. We have done parking studies at our other facilities, I think about seven other facilities spread around the country. They hired an engineer to independently review those, and it basically come out that they need about 300 spaces to meet their peak demand parking at their facilities. And then...
How many spaces?
That's it.
How many spaces they say they need?
About 300 is what they have seen, and we've shared those studies with staff. Those are spread across the country, and so they studied at their peak time on the weekends and then, you know, at a nighttime event to determine when that, and they actually had somebody drive around the parking lot to count how many parking spaces were there. We also did some what you call geo-fencing. You can by your cellphone, you can tell how many people are inside the building, how many parking spaces are there, and that was done by actually the subdivision developer in anticipation of this, to make sure this use could fit. Came out with basically the same numbers, so we've come across several, several different paths that come to this same number here.
Matt, two questions. So who's the shared parking agreement with?
It's really with ourselves, and so typically a shared parking agreement would be between, you know, John's on Lot 1, Bill's on Lot 2, it's going to be between John and Bill, but here it's between ourselves, and I think it really just gives the city an enforcement tool, is the way I understand it.
Where are these other, where is the other plot of parking spaces that are associated with this shared agreement?
It's really a shared agreement between the uses of the building itself, and not necessarily an off-site parking location.
You're going to have to help me there.
So we have five separate uses inside the building. So we've got an office, we've got retail, we've got a restaurant, we've got a bowling alley. And so if we were to, if all of those were individual users, say you had a 40,000 square foot building, and they were individual users, if we were to classify that, we would come in here and say it's a commercial center, and the site would need about 200, 225 spaces based on the floor area. But because we're one user, and we're breaking those out, the ordinance says we need more.
Okay.
But we're saying, hey, we don't need, we need more than 200, but we don't need 440 either.
Okay.
So we're at, you know, 310, and so we're going to have a shared agreement between ourselves essentially, is what that, is what the zoning ordinance demands, for lack of a better term.
Second question is, will there be access to this spot into Clary Park, into that Clary Park development, or everything's either going to be on Gresham Park and/or the shared drive behind McDonald's?
It's those, from a vehicular standpoint, it is into the private drive or on Gresham Park. There is pedestrian access along the shared drive or the private drive that we're building to the property line, and I think that Clary Park's townhomes are actually picking it up on their side and extending their site, correct, Margaret Ann? And so pedestrian-wise, we will have connectivity between the two. Vehicular-wise, we will not, because that portion of Clary Park is all gated off, and so it was not possible.
I'm trying to think through this shared parking agreement a little bit, just kind of get my head around it, and I'm not sure which way it really goes, but, you know, it seems like if you have multiple businesses there that do different things, a shared parking agreement makes sense, because, you know, maybe a restaurant has different timing than an office building does or whatever, as far as when people come, but yeah. My first response or reaction or thought in this thing is, well, I'm going to go there and bowl and eat, you know, the, obviously not going to be, the office is the only real thing, but those people are going to be there, the people that work there are going to be there. So I don't see how we get rid of 30% of the spaces when, there's no argument that I won't be there, at the same time I'm there to do the other use.
Well, and so what it is, is that little Johnny is going to be over playing the arcade while mom and daddy are over at the restaurant having, you know, having dinner, or they're over here bowling, and so there are, there is a lot of mixed use inside the building itself. And so instead of, you know, there being a bowling alley next door, and mom and daddy are over at the restaurant, they're all inside the same building. And so, oh, we're, we just don't have separate storefronts like you typically would for a building, for those uses.
So you're saying like that you don't have different points of destination that Chase would be going to, and then that, and I would be going to, and hence we would have two separate vehicles? Is that the thought process?
I'm saying that because we have the separate uses inside, you have the bowling alley that, say, family A is going to, little Johnny of that family is also going to be taking up space over here in the arcade or laser tag, and so they're, the same car that's arriving is going to be taking up space doing multiple things inside. And that, you know, if you've been to one of those places, it's, those kids are everywhere. So the floor area, we just didn't feel like the floor area was exactly apples for apples. That's why I kind of gave you some idea about how LTA is, you know, building size versus spaces, and, but we're also above what they provide because we think we need more, is what we're proposing.
This may be for Matthew or Margaret Ann. What do we normally do for just straight-up restaurant? It's a certain number of spaces per table or person?
Sure. A restaurant is one of two. It's either one for every 100 square feet of floor area, or one for every two seats on the premise, whichever is greater, plus parking for any outdoor seating.
Yeah, so I mean, with 435 people at the restaurant, that's 217 spaces alone. That means we only got 80 spaces for the bowling lane, an arcade, and it's a lot of bowling alleys. I don't know, obviously I got a little, I got a little bit heartache about it, but...
Well, and that's why we did, that's why we have provided those independent, we can provide them to you all as well, is to show, hey, here's our peak times, and those are all like holiday weekends, is whenever they, those, they know when their peak business is. They don't want to underpark their site. If they could, if they had a demand for 400 spaces, of people in there putting a quarter in a arcade machine, they'd be more than happy to do that. But it doesn't, you know, whenever we start adding parking that the business doesn't demand, then we're...
Is there room to put more parking here, though?
No, there's not at this location, but again, it goes back, this is how they park their sites, and they've had, not had that issue. That's why they've done that study. I'll let the architect talk a little bit about the building materials, walk that through.
Lou, Randy Barnett with ID Studio 4, we're the architects in record for the project, and we'll be more than happy to answer any questions you have about the materiality of the roll fab. Just as a, as an introduction, the roll fab, we think is a superior product to the cementitious board product that Margaret Ann had mentioned. It scratches less, it's a baked-on powder-coated finish. The aluminum is a, an aircraft grade, so it doesn't warp, it doesn't bend. You can take a baseball bat to it, it'll bend, but if it does, then that panel can be replaced easily and put back in. The pattern on it, as you can see, is superior, and it's an actual wood grain finish versus just a painted textured finish that the cementitious board has on it. And so we, we have moved to that product as, in the last five years, away from the cementitious board, just because it's more durable, it lasts longer, and it looks better. So those are the reasons why we are requesting the roll fab over a cementitious board product, but I'd be more than happy to answer any other questions you have.
So you have, in that five years, you haven't seen any fading issues associated with the product?
It's a 20-year warranty on the finish, and nichihaw only has a 10.
Okay.
Hailstorms, is that?
We haven't had, again, it's five years, and we haven't had any issue with it. If you looked at the sample of the aluminum, it's, it's a thick aluminum panel, and it's on a vertical surface, so it would have to take a baseball bat or something, you know, horizontal to really affect it. Which one is that? Let's see, that's, that's six years ago, that's got to be...
I want to see the one with the dent in it.
Yeah. Margaret Ann, did you, did you take a baseball bat to yours?
I want to see the one with the dent in it, just...
It's also, when it's attached to the wall, it's, so when it's attached to a wall, it's anchored every 16 inches, so it's a little bit...
That's fair, though, it's all right.
Margaret Ann?
Margaret Ann, not bad at some, though.
Yeah, okay.
You were just selling your thumb strength, right?
So the picture you see there is a project that is six years old, and there's no fading, there's no warping, there's no denting. We just feel that it's a superior product, and we'd like to request that we be able to use it in this location.
Have you had any problem with the, I don't know, my mind goes to graffiti. I'm worried about Sharpie markers, because that seems like it's hard to write on a, use a brick or something like that, but that seems very easy to draw, and have you had any issues cleaning that kind of thing off?
No. It's, again, it's a powder-coated finish, so same kind of finish that's baked on in an oven at high temperature is what that, that material is. And if it came to a point there where one panel was significantly damaged, we pull that panel out and replace it.
Thank you.
The other issue that staff had brought up was the columns at the front supporting our canopy. We had, we originally do a double V column to support that canopy, to give it a little design and effect. We have noticed that in your municipality, there was a racetrack that has a stone base with an angled column, so that's what we patterned our columns after. We have a stone base with the V column sitting on top of that. Okay? Go ahead.
Stone base.
Okay. So this was the original V column that we had proposed. In the, in the subsequent, we actually did a stone base that matches the wainscot behind it, so that way everything ties together, and then those V columns sit on top of that stone base, and that will be reflected in our final submission as well. The only other comment that staff had in relation to the design was the depth of our offsets for our voids, and we have no issue with that. We'll be more than happy to comply with staff's request on, on the depth of those offsets.
So you got a picture of Best Buy in here, in this packet?
I think it's showing the metal, the type of metal there, and so I think that was, you think it's a leucabond?
Yeah, it's the same metal that's on our canopy here. We just showed it as an example that was, was approved in a previous project in this...
Oh, just for your canopy, you mean?
Yes, that blue canopy is the same, same material product as, as on that Best Buy sign.
And, and again, you know, I'm not very good with these drawings and stuff, I just, I can't conceptualize it, but this picture on the front is kind of what you expect your building to look like? This is another building somewhere else, or what?
Our building can look a lot different. That's purely for the metals, you can see the, the star is gone, Ms. Green is very happy about that. It's not that same very modern look, and so...
Honestly, I was going to say, I mean, my, my first impression is, looking at these two pictures, the Best Buy just looks way more like the GDO to me than, than this picture does, right? I mean, so I'm...
Agreed.
I think our design is much more in keeping tune with Best Buy, with our current design. Main Event, you know, some of their buildings are very modern, very modern. Obviously, that's not what we have allowed in the GDO.
Yeah, you know, I think it's important to say, just the size of the building, where it is situated when people come off the interstate, you know, we've had this discussion about other businesses that have come in, you know, frankly, now this might be the very first thing that people see when they get off the interstate at the avenue, right? I mean, it's going to be a big building, and it's going to be facing right where you're pointing.
Absolutely.
You know, in the back set of the chamber, basically, you know? And so just, you know, I think it's important, we just make sure we're comfortable if this is, if we're going outside of the, the GDO boundaries, I just think we need to make sure. And again, I'm not very good at visualizing these things from pictures, I just, so I'm just saying it so people who are better at it than me can take that into account.
Outside the boundary, it's a different material. We have allowed leucabond and a couple, you know, maybe there's another metal out there, but, so I think it's a different product compared to the leucabond, a different manufacturer, a competitor, if you will.
Because the rest of this is all going to be brick?
Correct.
I mean, like outside of that, on the left and right of it, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
It's, at direction of staff, it's almost 90% masonry now. I mean, we've got some metal accents on our canopy, we've got some ephes accents at our, at our, you know, the top of our panels for our signage, we've got some crown molding, you know, that are, that's, but everything else, it's brick. We've got an accent brick, we've got a field brick, we've got stone and a cast stone element. We're trying to get to something that staff can improve, and I believe they support us at this point with our, with our finishes and our materials. Our normal building is a concrete tilt-up building with, with three, you know, parapet extensions on three sides, and we have gone above and beyond, hopefully, to make this appeal to you and all the rest of the commissioners for the GDO.
Do you have one going into Memphis, right on the right, coming into Memphis on 40, is that same, is that the same business?
Yes.
Yeah.
Jackson.
The closest one, I think, is in Huntsville, Alabama, and then there's one in Knoxville as well.
Well, I, I don't know about this, we all have questions about this. I do have questions about a couple, you know, back to the, the parking and one other thing, but as far as architecture, I'm... but as far as architecture, um.
Uh, and are, are, are we looking right now at the signage, Ms. Green, or are we just, just looking in general at the?
They, um, they are required to show where they expect signage to be, but they would be required to get a sign permit later. The eat bowl play is not on the wall, it's so many feet behind the glass, so it's not regulated in the sign ordinance. Um, the main event, uh, in the monument signage is, is required to be shown on the plans for scaling purposes.
Are there any other questions that I can help answer?
Architecture questions?
Thank you so much for your time, we really appreciate it.
Okay. Mr. Lilianz?
The other, you know, um, look, to be clear, I mean, I'm, I'm really, would love to see this come here. I mean, I love the idea and it's a great place to go and probably take my grandkids one day or whatever, but, um.
Like you.
Yeah, take me, if there was more beer drinking.
There'll be endless supply for you, Mr. Lilianz, of a tap.
The private drive, the, the one entrance coming in off Gresham Park is probably the only other place I've got, I mean, I've got, my heartache is in the parking and in the, the, the one entrance coming out of Gresham Park, and I, maybe it's because I don't understand this whole private drive thing. That's just a private drive around the McDonald's right there?
It accesses back out to Medical Center, it also accesses back out to Gresham Park. Yes, sir.
So essentially, though, I mean, private drivers may be throwing me off a little bit here, but people are gonna be able to come in here and come out right on that drive, just like it's a public road?
Yes, sir. It's actually part of our lot, and so the driveway on the Medical Center is, for lack of a better term, is our driveway on the Medical Center, um, because it's a, it's a flag, that's a flag of our lot. But it'd be, it would function just like the entrance that Rooms to Go has on Medical Center Parkway, except we're sharing it with McDonald's and Rooms to Go. And we've got a maintenance agreement, all, all those things are set up.
Would you be allowed a sign there? Just curious.
No, I think we have to have at least 100-foot of frontage on a road, if I remember the current sign ordinance, uh, but don't quote me on that, I do not claim to know signs, so. I think whenever we originally set that up, we thought we could, but that ordinance has changed, and so.
I get, so the only, I know we're not looking at a site plan at this point, but I guess the, the access point on Gresham Park Drive would be as close to Wilkinson Pike as possible, cause I could see cars backing up on Gresham Park trying to get onto Medical Center Parkway, especially with the number of cars that would come in and out of here. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir. We could, I mean, other, other location, we could move, we could move it like one more bay over, uh, but I think there's some utilities, um, in that location, and we are installing a right turn lane. I think McDonald's, uh, installed a right turn lane or with that private drive, and then we're installing a right turn lane into ours as well, so we're trying to get them off of Gresham Park as quickly as possible.
Yeah. Be turning left on Gresham Park is what, kind of what I'm talking about, you would want it.
Okay, you're, yes.
Yeah.
And I think that's where the multiple access points, obviously, at certain times of the day.
Outta here, onto.
Get out of the side.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so we, we could maybe move it about 30 or 40 feet there, Mr. Halliburton, but that would be all.
Will we get any help? I'm trying to find a zoomed out picture, I wonder if, I think what I expect to happen at Wilkinson is that it's gonna kind of veer north somewhere up in there, you know, um, when it gets connected eventually, um, so there might be a little more distance.
Right.
Between this and Wilkinson eventually, I don't know that, but I think that's kind of the direction it's headed.
You're talking, kinda, something like that counts?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think that's kind of what the drawings look like in order to get the, the curved angle.
I think you're.
Right.
100% right.
And it looks like the, if they come out of the site, uh, and use the driveway between McDonald's and Rooms to Go, um, that's a just right turn only onto Medical Center Parkway right there, and there, there's no light there, cause that's so close to the.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct?
I will say that eventually, you will be able to drive through the parking lot of, uh, Rooms to Go and, um, whatever user comes on the east side or south side of Rooms to Go, and will be able to access Willow Oak Trail. Those will be, all that parking will be interconnected, and so you'd have to know where you're going, but there will be interconnection, uh, through there, and that's the whole, that's the whole reason the, uh, GDO promotes, and our design guidelines now promote the interconnectivity, so you can get multiple ways in and out without having to get back on the public street.
That's good to know, cause, um, all this dumping on Gresham Park Drive, that, that'd be, over time, that's gonna be a difficult situation, so that, good to know that they could get back.
Yes, sir.
To the other direction, eventually.
Yes, and so Rooms to Go, uh, they anticipate breaking ground on their expansion that we, that y'all reviewed a few months ago. I think they're gonna try to do that after the 4th of July, and then, um, I know that staff has talked to, uh, the out parcel that's on the other side that would make the connection to Willow Oak. I don't believe they've made a formal application, though, but we do anticipate that coming in the very near future.
And that's the last piece?
Yes, ma'am.
Needs to make the connection.
Yeah, that, that is the corner at the intersection of Willow Oak and Medical Center.
Yeah. Okay, well, this is initial design review, um, and our main, uh, questions that, uh, Ms. Green wanted to make sure we were comfortable with is the use of the, uh, roll fab metal and then the parking, shared parking agreement.
I guess one question, are we setting the precedent with the roll fab metal that you're gonna add it as an acceptable material, or this is just a one-off that's gonna come to us every time?
It's hard for me to, um, speak for the future, but my experience is that, um, if you do approve it, then you probably will see it used elsewhere, because you have people come say, well, look at the Best Buy, they got to do this, I wanna do this, or look at the, whatever it is. Um, you know, I, by nature, am more traditional, but know that I need to consider other things. Um, I don't really have an opinion either way about it, but, you know, I asked them to do tile or Nietzsche Hall or something different, because those materials I'm familiar with, and so I have some kind of comfort there, but they can't ask you to do a different material. Um, it is within your ability to consider that.
And I would, I'm sorry, but I would take it this is a new.
That's what I was gonna ask. How new is this product, uh, out there, and then do we have any data?
Um, I, I mean, they've been using it for five years, which makes me think it's newer. I don't, um, I don't, I don't actually know, I just, I, I know a Luccabond, I've been using, you know, been looking at it and touching it for 15 years, so. Do you want to have this?
Architect says it's been on the market for about 10 years, plus or minus.
And I do think we have to expect that over time, we're gonna continue to see, I would hope, newer products and different things, and we're gonna have to be, you know, prepared to, to look at those and view those and decide if it's something we want to.
It's not in the, in the gateway, it's, but in our design guidelines, we have a little asterisk in the materials section that says new materials, um, cause there was concern during the process that we can't predict the future and we can't, but we do have to have the ability, these documents give people, uh, fair playing, they, you know, everybody's on the fair playing ground if we can write this down, and it says that materials can be reviewed in the future, the things that we will consider are durability and maintenance. So those two factors are what are important to us when we review new materials. I mean, um, and so, we wrote that in design guidelines, because, you know, Nietzsche Hall was new and Thornton's was the one that, the first one I can remember that used it. Now, it, the red color faded to pink, and so I know that now, but, you know, I'm, I'm a planner, I've got a master screen planning, the architecture, and so there are things that I don't know, but I keep my eye on things and see how they handle over time. Um, so we did, we did want an out for new materials, but I don't know if this metal is in the, in the bounds of what you think's appropriate, that's really why we, uh, kinda, I wanted to make sure that, that you were there. The parking, I think as a group, we know that our zoning ordinance is probably, requires more parking than this use actually needs, but what that number is, is what staff doesn't know. Um, I feel, and you know, we have talked to our engineers and transportation and everybody to make sure we're all talking about it, so I think there's that acknowledgement that our zoning ordinance, um, calls it public, uh, indoor commercial amusements, which is a wide, you know, variety, so we think that there probably is opportunity to implement the zoning ordinance tools, but where that is, Mr. McKnight wanted to make sure the planning commission opined upon that.
Well, you know, speaking of the shared parking agreement, now that I understand it, uh, having the analogy of the planes, trains, automobiles, having a similar square feet in 200 spaces, and, I mean, my kids are older now, but when they were younger, we were out there quite a bit, and there was plenty of parking out there, at least every time we went out there. Now, this location is different. You have to really be wanting to go to planes, trains and automobiles to get there, this place is gonna be, uh, people are gonna see it and may wanna just go to it, instead of it just being a point of destination, like, you're really not gonna drive out there to planes, trains and automobiles unless you're going there. And so, I think that it's a good thing that you're adding 100 spaces, because I really, uh, I think that, that you're gonna, you're gonna have a whole lot more activity here, which is the purpose of why you're putting it here, uh, at this location than in comparing it to 100, 200 spaces that, where planes, trains and automobile is today.
And same-sized buildings.
Exactly.
I mean, I think.
Is it the same amount of amenities, though? I mean, is it like, I think it's similar in bowling, I just don't know if it's.
I got a restaurant.
They're just kinda small, but it's not 435 seats.
No.
It's a.
They've, uh, I, I've never went and counted the seats, councilman, and, uh, so I honestly can't say that. I don't even know how many, exactly how many bowling alleys, I would assume it's a similar amount, but, I mean, I, I don't know that, so I cannot, I will say from a location perspective, I think that most of main events locations are probably in similar areas to what we're proposing here. They wanna be at the high-vis areas, they wanna be around people, um, they want people to walk, you know? Yeah, we think about kids, but we also think that, hey, these people are gonna be living around in the townhomes and apartments and the, uh, single-family homes are gonna walk here, too, so, um, we think we're gonna get some of that, we, we wanna get some of that, so.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw a curveball out here real quick, okay? Um, you know, I.
It's not a knuckle.
It's, it's, yep, curve, it's easy. Um, it's actually going the opposite direction here, so, uh, I just think if, I wonder if it makes sense, and this may be from Margaret Ann, but I wonder if it makes sense that if we do approve it, that we would actually try to go ahead and approve some kind of small sign site out on Medical Center Parkway?
Yeah, I, I, I know we've got a sign ordinance to deal with, but I think directional signs, how, uh, of getting out of here would be helpful.
And, I mean, getting, getting in keeps all the people off of Gresham Park.
Right.
Getting out is not really gonna be, you'll have some help, but if they go out that private drive to get out and go right, they're just gonna clog up Gresham Park intersection anyway, see, and you can't go left.
Yeah.
So, but it's, at least people coming from town to get into the space, would, we'd get a little bit of relief on that, is about all I can think of.
Right.
But, I just, I don't know what the appropriate thing to be there, but, and I'm not trying to be unfair to other people, I just don't know, you know, it's almost like, I feel like we do this, we really need to encourage people to use the private drive, so that we're not cramming everybody into one spot.
Can I ask you if the sign you're talking about is here? Or here?
Yeah.
There, too.
I, um, can certainly, Mr. Holtz in Building Codes has repeatedly asked me not to speak to signage, um, so I will gladly. [laughing] Reach out to him and Ms. Stevens to discuss that, the potential of signage there. Uh, Mr. Taylor, uh, was correct about, generally speaking, you need to have at least 100 feet of, of width to have a sign. Now, I don't know if you have fronts along two streets, how that applies, so I can ask them to look into it and give us an opinion on it. Some of the things we consider when you have these private drives is that, does McDonald's have a sign here, does Room to Go have a sign here, and, but you're talking about a probably smaller.
Yeah, we're talking about directional.
Directional.
Not advertising, but directional.
Yeah. And so, I mean, I'll certainly see what kind of options are there.
I guess we need to know.
But the planning commission, I don't think, could, uh, approve doing something against the zoning ordinance, but maybe there's a, or the sign ordinance, maybe there's a creative way to, to implement that. Sometimes you can even name the, a development sign, like, if it's a development, you get a sign, you name it the business, and that's a way of kind of being creative.
Okay, well.
So maybe options.
This whole area back here, just more like a, a planned sign, uh, like we did at the hospital, like we did at the avenue, you know, these three, the McDonald's, the Rooms to Go and whatever the, is looking at the next site, you know, just this little, you know, something between them all that would be agreed to using directional signs within their little, you know, area that they're sharing, basically.
Sure.
And I'm sorry for the curveball, I just think.
No, I think it's, I think it's a good idea.
From a traffic perspective, that.
So that's certainly something, you know, that's not doing anything against the zoning ordinance, that's a, something that's out there and available, but I don't know if it only can be used when it's all by the same owner.
So the planned signage overlay, I think the bigger thing would be, um, the acreage, there's a minimum acreage requirement, I think it used to be 25, then went down to 20, it may be different now, you need 20 acres, and then all the landowners, they, they can be separate, but they do have to be able to work together. And so, this obviously is a part of Clary Park, that would be easy, I don't know how the McDonald's and Rooms to Go, though, they're really kind of on their own, um, but everything else is a part of it. But the, the sign ordinance is something we can, we'll be glad to look at, I mean.
One of the things that's obviously gonna come up, and one of the big worries with that is, you know, just thinking about the Holiday Inn Express that came up, all right, well, you know, sitting in the crowd potentially, and they're gonna go, oh, yeah, we want one of those little signs out there on Medical Center Parkway, too.
Yeah.
You know, but it's, it's.
I think.
This is a private drive, I mean, I know that's gonna, that would create that issue potentially, and I don't wanna create that issue, so I'm not, it's not necessarily a deal killer, but this is a private drive, so maybe it's different. And if it is, good, if it's not, then we scratch it.
I think you just gave them a heart attack, there's no planning commission who's ever asked for more signs. [laughing] This is the first time in the history.
I, trust me.
United States of America, that a planning commission asks for more signs.
I'm still trying to get rid of those blue ones, you know, but.
[laughing] You really wanna put a nail in the coffin, tell me you want LED?
I think, I think.
Do not say that, please, do not say that.
Color, black and white, doesn't matter to me.
I think, I think whatever we need to do, we just need to, we look at our ordinance
and make sure that whatever we do.
Sure.
Is, is within our ordinance and that we're not straying from our ordinance, and that's something that we can look at between now and, and final design review.
Yeah, I think that's just the general idea, is you understand where we're coming from and what we're trying to accomplish, and so help us figure out what we need to do to disperse traffic, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's any more?
Go ahead.
The only thing I would add is, is if there is data out on the new material, if we can have it in final design review, that would be good. I think, I mean, I'm looking at the material and looking at the rib, it's on just a structural rib, so I don't think there's gonna be any bending and all that, but.
Do you think like the manufacturer's information, is that what you're?
Excuse me.
The manufacturer's information, like the cut sheets?
Yeah, or that, or some type of competitive comparison, so that we understand what we're actually approving as new is better, worse, or, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And we probably wanna do that with anything that's coming out brand new.
I, I agree, I don't, personally, I don't know how to get the information, but maybe it's something we can get the architect to help us with.
Okay. Well, yeah, they're bringing it, putting it on there.
Yeah.
You gonna make a motion?
Yeah, just, yeah, I mean, look, I'm, I got heartache about the parking stuff, but, um, if they've got a lot of data to back it up, and we've got kind of some experience to back it up on our end, what we're seeing at LTA, um, I'll make a motion that we approve it, subject to all staff comments.
I'll second it.
Motion is second, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that was initial design review, so we'll see it again. All right, that concludes that section, and we're moving on to our plaques and plans. Uh, first thing we have is West Lawn Pavilion, Lot Four, this is in McDonald's, it's a site plan review of a 4,540-square-foot restaurant. It's a site plan review of a 4,540 square foot restaurant located on 1.6 acres, Zoned PUD, located along Veterans Parkway and Shores Road. McDonald's USA LLC is the developer. Ms. Green.
Thank you very much. First item is, are you guys for McDonald's? Okay, I was wondering who they were. The next item we have is the first item of Platts and Plans and it's for a lot located in the West Lawn PUD. The reason it's on regular agenda and isn't on, being reviewed administratively is because the West Lawn Plan Development does commit, commit to meeting the gateway design overlay district standards, not process. So unlike the items you just reviewed that have initial design review and final design review, this one combines initial and final until one meeting. So they've presented all the information today and are hopeful that they'll get, get approval from you today. And so this is a part of the West Lawn Pavilion Commercial subdivision, which essentially means it's now parcel of the future Publix. Several years ago, you reviewed and approved a site plan for Publix without parcels. One of the out parcels is a 7-Eleven. There's a couple more and then this one's on the south side, on the corner of Shores Road and Veterans Parkway. Veterans Parkway is a major arterial. It's the street with the higher functioning classification, so staff was concerned with the building and how it's oriented toward Medical Center Parkway. We wanted to make sure that a front was being projected to that street and so that's, that's one of the items that we shared with them. It is a fast food restaurant, McDonald's is, and so they, their primary business, of course, is fast food and people don't spend a lot of time here. The drive-through is a significant part of the business. They do have the 10 queuing spaces in the closest lane, which is what we required and it doesn't conflict with any of the required parking here. And then they do have some of those mobile order pickup spaces that we've seen on fast food restaurants and fast casual restaurants recently. They are not, if they're reserved for a use, they can't count for the minimum parking calculations, but they are able to meet and exceed the minimum parking calculations. A fast food restaurant is permitted in the PUD. The restaurant itself is 4,540 square feet and then it will have a shared drive to Veterans Parkway as you have discussed with previous items. We do look to reduce the number of drives, particularly on arterials, so that we can reduce the future conflicts and so they have a shared drive with whatever lot may be to the north. No direct access on Shores Road to the south. Shores Road will be signalized. However, they will have access to the shared drive along the rear and so that's this drive here. It's not constructed yet, but it will be constructed, of course, and it's a part of the, the Publix property. Some of the comments that we shared were making sure that shared drive includes elements that you would normally see on a public street. Public streets, of course, have public lighting and maintenance and public streetscape applications and so when they're private, planning commissions ask staff to look at ways to make sure that they're lit appropriately and maintained, particularly thinking of the Chroma Luxe development on Memorial Boulevard where the Dunkin' Donuts is and Staples, where you all have guided us in the past to make sure that that's addressed. So that's part of the comments that we have made. This site, although staff's recommending you approve it today, we do recommend that you approve it subject, subject to all staff comments. They haven't quite been able to address the comments that we shared with them, particularly with the front along Shores Road. The gateway ordinance requires front landscaping, a rather large front landscape yard along streets and they've got like a, a big hole that they need to really put a stormwater structure in and buy over tension there, so they really need to continue working on that. It's not there yet. I think those details, if you do condition approval on staff comments, we can address those prior to issuing permits, but I just wanted to mention that they're not quite where they need to be with the site design. I'm going to invite the team to come, talk about the, the building itself. I'll pass the material boards around. You can see that the McDonald's is a little bit different than older prototypes. They are still using yellow on the building and mostly it's on the awning. I have asked them to dimension that. I, I can kind of guess the height of that yellow strip. It's not very high, but it is on the building, so I did want to kind of just point that out. And like I said, brickstone or rock are the primary materials, not masonry. And so I, I think I continually correct people just because I want to make sure it's clear that it's brickstone or rock and so you, the colors, the materials they're using are brickstone or rock. What may not be clear to you is that they're implementing quite a bit of spandrel glass in the building and spandrel glass, of course, are faux windows. And although we can allow those, we do ask for them to be backlit so that they do have an ambiance, especially when it's nighttime, they don't look, if you look at a building without backlit spandrel, it uses a lot of spandrel, something seems kind of off and that's part of what's going on. The, the avenues uses a lot of that and some other developments here in West Lawn Development. But I'll go ahead and ask the design team to come up and share the information on the building with you and I'll pass this around.
Hi, I'm Bob Kemkus, Robert Kemkus Architects. We're the architect for the building and we want to thank Margaret Ann for all her help in leading us through the design guidelines and I think we've done a pretty good job working with McDonald's in-house architects as well as our own staff in addressing many of the concerns that we had. This is not a typical McDonald's. We really don't see, McDonald's works typically in prototypes and this is nothing like one. I think the first one we brought to you maybe was aluminum battens, maybe? That's kind of what McDonald's theme is right now. So this is quite a bit different. It's similar to what we've done in urban areas before. Margaret Ann alluded to the spandrel glass. A lot of times that's to provide some additional look of glazing on a, on a street frontage or something, so it doesn't look just like a mass of masonry. And other than that, I think we did incorporate some stone sills, we incorporated stone coping. We increased the height of the parapet of this building a foot from a typical McDonald's to ensure that no rooftop equipment could be seen. We did finish the sides of any parapets that would be noticeable and, and we do acknowledge Margaret Ann's comment about backlighting the spandrel, so it may have to be something more of a, a lighter tint on that glass to be able to have that work. But I think it's a good comment and I think she's right, it would make a big difference in the look of the building at night. So I'm happy to answer any questions. We have a representative from Kim Lee Horn, who's the site designer, the civil engineer for this project, so if you have any questions of either one of us, we're happy to, happy to answer what we can. She's over there.
Kelly Frank with Kim Lee Horn. I, I don't have much to add from what Margaret Ann has mentioned, but, but certainly happy to answer any questions.
Can we see the site planner, the queuing piece to this?
Let's see. You can see a queuing diagram here, so we have our two lane drive-through and then bypass around the outside.
That's kind of a newer prototype for McDonald's with two lanes approaching the double drive-throughs. Seems more efficient getting cars through. Margaret Ann alluded to it, McDonald's drive-through business is approximately 70% of their total business these days.
So I guess you already know it works, right? Looks, I'd be very confused. I'd probably get in the wrong lane.
You always pick the longest one.
I would.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions for any of the team? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions about the site or anything for Margaret Ann?
No, I move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you all. Our next item is Fountain Place, lots six through eight. It's a site plan for three multi-tenant commercial office buildings totaling 35,400 square feet on four acres, Zoned CF and OG, located along East Northfield Boulevard and Pitts Lane. Hassan Islami is the developer. Ms. Smith?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commission. This particular project, as you stated, is actually on the northeast corner of Pitts Lane and Northfield, shown here on the above diagram. Those areas that you see in the staff report, there are three separate buildings and there's two different zoning classifications. So the proposal includes ultimately consolidating lots seven and eight on this side of the project and then lot six would be separated and that will also separate the two different use types, this one being the OG portion, so it will be an office building uses with up to nine tenants. And then building seven and eight are Zoned CF and there's a residential RS, I believe, 15 to the north of the project site. So the way that the project, main staff comment that staff has is this particular access point here on Pitts Lane needs just a little bit more work so that if somebody's taking a northbound turn into this parking lot and somebody is coming out, there's more of a throat distance to be able to make that turn movement into the site. They do have more than enough parking provided on each site lot individually and so you'll notice in there, the engineering department has the comment that that still needs to be adjusted for the site to function, which may take out, you know, a handful of parking spaces and may cause the storm water to either shift from this area and there's already currently planned a, underneath the pavers, a, sorry, storm detention area underneath the pavers on part of the building. The applicant does believe engineering wise, they can make those adjustments and you'll notice here on the turn template, how tight that turn is and so that's why staff's wanting to make sure that that is taken care of with the final project that comes forward. And this is their open space and formal open space that they're providing, shared formal open space between these two building uses for outside, should they have restaurant uses, they are speculative. And then you'll notice those improvements at those two formal open space areas so that it functions well for the use. The building on the corner, building six, you'll notice the architecture is slightly different from the other two buildings because it is an office space. We want to make sure over time it continues to be that because there are limitations, what you can and cannot locate in that zone district. So here you'll see the side rendering with their door locations on the site and a special note is on the corner, we actually have a 45 degree angle, so that better speaks to the intersection. You'll see here, building seven and eight are almost identical with quite a bit of glazing towards Northfield and towards the exterior drive entrance on the site. With all of these things, we believe the report and their site plan is generally in good order so long as all staff comments are met. This is not a public hearing item for your consideration today. And the applicant, Huddleston Steel, is here as well as the property owner, Mr. Islami, if you have any questions for them. Okay. Questions on this side?
Let me do it real quick. What's the use?
The use is office building towards the corner and then it's CF, commercial fringe on the other two pieces, so any kinds of retail buildings, I think no more than one restaurant per building seven and building eight would be the maximum within our sewer ordinance. But they're anticipating the owner of lot six is a doctor himself, so he's looking at their offices and then other similar office type uses, but they don't have, I don't believe they don't have any users defined for the property, all of the tenant spaces at this time.
It was just up on the screen about the warehouse distribution building. There was just up on our screen.
Oh. Mine might have been.
I think that's the next applicant.
I got you. It got to the end, I was like.
That'd be a horrible location for warehouse distribution.
So is, is the property to the, I guess, north? Is it RS 15?
It is. So it's RS 15 due north and then I believe it's CH on the corner. And that's Les Cassus Pike and this edge of their property is where the ingress point is. There's actually a shared roadway access between the two commercial centers.
There's not a side-by-side or where you can see both, all the buildings?
There is not one that you can see all of them side-by-side. So there's one page per lot. So this would be that, what you would see along the frontage, that bottom one is what you would see facing East Northfield. Then on building seven, this is, the bottom drawing is what you would see across Northfield. And then building eight, you'll notice identical buildings. So you'll have two identical buildings on the right-hand side or the easterly side of the property and then that slightly different building that's longer on the corner. So same building materials and types, just different roof structures for them so that you can distinctly tell it's a different type of use. If you look at most of our office space, when they're in these kind of CF or OG zones, we'll usually see more of the hip style roof, which you'll see right there. So this is what you'll see on the corner. So this face is actually facing Pitts Road. This portion is what faces, I don't know if you can see that little hand on there?
Yeah.
And then, so if you look at this particular site, what you'll see from Pitts will be this one in the very top, I believe. Yes. So this top, so it's 75 feet deep of a building and then I think each of the spaces, so that's about, I want to say, what's the square footage? So the square footage, I think in total is about 37,000 square feet between the three buildings and it's roughly split up a third, a third, a third.
Do you all even remember, know when this got zoned? And is it, is there somewhere, I guess I.
Mr. Delance, I've been here since '01 and I believe it's been zoned OG and CF right there since at least as long as I've been working for the city.
Yeah, it seems like.
Did it come in when the whole Food Line Project came in, that whole area probably got zoned?
I remember there was, I remember there was property on the, on the other side of the Church of Christ that, that an insurance agent was trying to get zoned PCD. This was right when I started in '01, tried to get zoned PCD for an insurance office on that property in between that single family neighborhood and the Church of Christ. And I remember at that time, which was in '01 or '02, that there was, you know, a number of people came out and to a neighborhood meeting and said, said, you know, we were made promises that the, that the commercial zoning would not go west of Pitts Lane. And so I think that this zoning went to Pitts Lane probably at some point in the 80s or 90s and has just, has been sitting there, zoned that way, undeveloped for, for several decades.
I'm going to, there's probably some stuff in our guidelines that address this, but I'll just ask to make sure, I mean, just think, since this does abut right to a single family residence is that, you know, the, whatever you call the boxes, the drive-through boxes and.
Yes, there is no drive-through, actually. This project originally, they had looked at putting a drive-through between these two buildings. Because of the underlying zoning, they would have needed a BZA approval, so they couldn't have it by right. And because the adjacent home sits about where my hand is, about in the middle section, we said you can't meet really the distances to meet the BZA standards. And then the other thing we did is you might look and why is this trash enclosure moved to the south side? Part of that is trying to get it as far away from that. Part of that is trying to get it as far away from that home as possible, even though there's going to be tons of landscaping, you know, down this whole frontage, the lot mostly is forest currently. So, it will see a difference, but they are required to have adequate buffer landscaping. So, I think they have, I can't remember if it's a B, yeah, type B buffer is along this northerly side. And then, even between the OG and the CF, there's a specific buffer requirement there as well, between those two zone uses, even though it's all in one.
But is there three trash receptacles?
There are. So, there's one for the six, and then there's one here for lot seven, and one here for lot eight.
Which is next to the house, right?
House is actually up forward, up in this section. So, if you look at the cover sheet, you can see where the house is located. So, lot six, it's, it's right about two-thirds into lot six. So, again, we tried to move those as far away as physically possible. At one time, they were thinking about keeping lots seven and eight separate. But then, when they realized, gosh, if we're using kind of the same, a formal open space, it may make better sense to do it as an HPR, because it will really function as one.
You know, I think, since it has been zoned this way a long time, and it certainly, I mean, from a use standpoint, I think the use makes sense to me. I'm, I got, my heartache is probably those back parking spots. We got another thing going on right now. And we're talking about parking spots right up next to a longstanding, beyond this zoning, probably a resident, residential area. And just those parking spots is where you're going to be pulling in, shining straight towards the house. I don't know if there's going to be a fence, other than just the buffer, I'm not sure what a type, you know, I don't know what...
There's not a fence proposed, and I can't remember on the landscape plan, let's see what we've got.
Mr. Delance, it would be within the purview of the planning commission. Our zoning ordinance is, specifies that if there are additional conditions that need to be placed to mitigate negative impacts on adjacent residential areas, that's within the planning commission's purview. So, oftentimes in situations like this, a fence has been required to mitigate the impact of the glare of the headlights pointing into an adjacent residential property.
And I, you know, I don't know the exact thing. I just kind of think, you know, what I've been seeing most developers do is they go in and, you know, I call it Chernobyl, you know, the whole area. They bulldoze every single tree, you know, to where it's just a flat, don't leave any of them. And so, I don't have a lot of confidence that the forest that exists in that spot right now will still exist.
And I think, Mr. Huddleston, he's itching to jump up, I think, but maybe can address. And you'll see on the screen, here's the landscape plan, but I do not believe that there's any, there's no proposed preservation of tree easement. So, I'm assuming that these are all new trees because of the grading. And you'll notice that on the grading plan right here is where they have the ponding, most of their ponding on this particular portion of the site. And then, the ponding or the drainage is under the pavers that are in place here. But yes, we have seen other projects when we have a drive-through, definitely, we usually have a fence. But thank you, Matthew, for pointing out that it's planning commission's purview. If you think additional separation is needed, that, that's more than within your rights.
So, we've got 10-foot buffer on the one lot and 15-foot type D on the other lot, but still...
Where, where are you seeing that, Kathy? What do you mean, that, that...
Let's see, I'm on the page, it says, I'm looking at the truck turning template, because that's the one I've got questions about in the bottom.
Yes, and it does say right where my hand is, that actually says a 10-foot type B as in boy buffer on this portion, and then this portion says...
It's a 15-foot type D.
15-foot type D as in David buffer. So, there's a bigger buffer along seven and eight, and along six, it's less of a buffer.
And it's, and a lot of that zoning...
CF.
Right. A lot of that has to do with the zoning and the uses that are permitted in both of the zones. You know, when you think about office general zone, most of those uses are, are eight-to-five uses, not a whole lot of intrusion in the evening and weekend hours, whereas the CF zone is going to have more, slightly more intense uses, restaurants that might be open later, things of that nature.
While we're kind of talking about that, I did just want to ask on this, this particular page that I was looking at that had the truck turning radius, I guess where the, showing the trucks coming in to get the dumpsters. I guess we've got cross-access easements back to the Food Line property, it looks like?
Yes, so there's actually, today, this easement here and roadway already exists.
Okay. And so, trucks can come in down that side and then come in along the back, pull in, back up, pull in, back up, get those. It's when they go on out the other side, that, is that a problem? Is that 180-degree almost?
Right. So, you'll notice that there's a staff comment that says they need to make some further adjustments to this particular section. So, originally, the site plan showed the driveway coming out further to the south on Pitts Lane, and that was right within this left-hand turn lane for southbound Pitts, turning onto North Field. And so, what staff has pushed for is holding that drive as far north as possible, so that we don't have the conflicts with the turn lane on Pitts. But what we anticipate, and Katie Knowles here, if you have any specific questions for her, Katie's coming up, that are addressed here in her staff comments.
Okay. Good afternoon, Planning Commission. We have asked them to soften that curve, the curvature, possibly losing a parking space or shifting some around to soften that curve, so it's not a 180-degree turn at that drive. And that would be one of the staff comments, if you approve, subject to staff comments.
Okay. And are these trucks, the garbage trucks that are picking up, that I guess are what they're measuring here, would be close to, or, I mean, would there also be 18-wheelers that are going to be coming in down here? Because again, that truck curve is going to be very different.
Yes, it would. Was there a fire, this is just a garbage truck, is there a fire truck turnaround also?
I think there's just not attached here.
Okay. All right. Well, you've probably looked at all of that.
We look at the fire truck also, so the fire truck would be similar, because the tractor-trailers, they bend, whereas our fire truck is, does not.
Yeah.
If, if the fire truck can make it, then those should be...
Okay.
Close to as well.
Perfect. So, on the buffer then, back to that. Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Any, any other questions other than the buffer? We want to go back to buffer discussion. Are y'all thinking fence?
My, my personal preference, I don't, you know, it's not really, you know, it's not mine, but my personal preference, if I'm to, for me, would be to try to keep, you know, if we could keep the 10, you know, 10 feet of trees there, the what's currently there, and a fence or something, you know, I don't know how that equates to a type E buffer or type D buffer or whatever. I can't touch the thing, but it just seems like, if I'm doing my little scale right, it actually does look like the house is going to be exactly right there where that western dumpster is. I mean, it's not up in front of it. It's going to be right at it.
It's right about this location.
Yeah. I mean, so it's as close to the house as you could possibly get it, actually, that, that dumpster. Without being on the north side of the parking lot, obviously, right?
And here, you can see the house a little bit clearer. So, there is lot six, and its boundary is about right where my hand is.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's just right.
At location. And then, the house is, of course, right next door.
So, you're thinking also the fence would be used as a sound buffer as well as the lights and...
And I know over at Brookhaven Lot One, we had a project that did have a drive-through that was adjacent to residential, and in that location, we had suggested and required a fence, six-foot tall fence, that kind of met in the center section where the, the issue was the most, because we really didn't want to see a fence all the way out to the public right-of-way. You know, because then it makes it feel like your property's cut off even more. And so, you know, using that same kind of thinking, potentially, I think it might make sense if, if you've got a fence, that it would be coming along maybe this section. So, that that way, the longer-term uses, the ones that might be there till nine o'clock at night, those headlights would hit the fence, not the house. And then, those uses from the dumpster being in close proximity, even though it's across the aisle, again, could have some noise buffer being provided in that location. And I don't know, maybe Mr. Huddleston can address, you were talking about keeping any of the trees, and is that possible? And Mr. Huddleston, if you can speak to that.
Good afternoon, Chair Jones, members of Planning Commission. I'm Bill Huddleston with Huddleston Steel Engineering. We are showing the buffer that's required along that north side of the office lot, lot six, but we also added some trees in that buffer to exceed the requirement just in the area of that house, to make sure we were getting it screened. We are okay with putting some fence there, if that's what you want. And I start to feel like the oldest person in the room, because I do remember when we rezoned this area. It was rezoned at the same time that the Food Line Shopping Center was developed. There was a Food Line developer. However, the Pitts family retained this area and asked it to be rezoned at the same time. It was two sons, and their father's name was Fountain Pitts, and that's why it's called Fountain Place.
There you go.
So, you've got the additional trees.
I do have additional trees in the, in the buffer, right.
On the landscape plan.
Is there any, just, is it realistic to think to leave some of those trees? I mean, I think they're pretty...
When you look at it, they're not the best trees in the world. We've actually cleared, we've cleared site to get enough topo, but asked the developer not to clear along that, along that part, which, so that we can use some of that if we need to, and we'll evaluate with that with Mr. Barbie when the time comes, see if we can use existing stuff. I like using existing trees as opposed to planting new ones, because they seem to provide a better buffer. So, we can work with him to see about that as well.
But you're not opposed to the fence if we'd like to see the fence?
Not opposed to putting some fence there, right.
I, I think the portion, you know, almost halfway or slightly more towards Pitts Lane, doesn't have to go all the way out there like, like Ms. Smith was recommending.
Yeah, could we just, could we consider that a staff comment, just based on, yeah, like, that you, we just basically giving you the...
Yes. Normally, what staff would do is any input from Planning Commission that you want implemented, we would just add it to the staff comments. So, we could approve, subject to staff comments, with the addition of fencing along the northerly parcel, half of lot six and half of lot seven for better protection.
And really, I just sort of leave that up to you guys in the process, like you were saying with Mr. Barbie, or who, you know, as y'all go through it, I'm, you know, I don't have a specific spot that's got to start and got to end, it just needs to make sense.
Do you have a preference as to the type of privacy fence, vinyl, wood?
I'll just leave that up to y'all, working with them too, I would say. I mean, something obviously, I mean, the idea is, you're just trying to protect that piece of property that is obviously an old residence, I mean, older residence that's there and...
I think, I think in most commercial applications like this, we would usually see the, like, white vinyl privacy fence.
Okay. That's fine. All right. I'll make a motion that we approve it then with those staff comments and all others. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on, our next item is Parkway Place, Lot Seven. It's a site plan for a 22,500-square-foot multi-tenant commercial building on 1.95 acres, Zoned PID, located along Richard Reeves Drive. Swanson Development LP is the developer. Ms. Smith.
Hello again. So, you'll notice on the picture above, it's kind of hard to figure out where your context is, but we do have some other discussions in this same planned industrial development. Lot Seven is actually located along, this is Richard Reeves Boulevard, and it's a continuation of the project that the developer has been underway. Previously, staff has approved lot six to the north and lot five to the north, very similar building, 10 tenant spaces, which would allow for roll-up doors in the back, also a side pedestrian door, and then one large space for a potential tenant for a large big rig to drop off at the site. And I'm hoping I'm using the right terms. Main thing that staff has looked at as far as staff comments on this area is currently there is a cross-access, a shared cross-access easement that is provided, I believe, between the parcels. But when we started to look at the truck turning radius, they needed a little bit more distance in order to get it, if they needed to take this truck, pull it out, back it up onto the adjacent property and pull out. And then, we also noticed that as you're coming to access this back area, I believe, between lot seven and eight, and between lot six and seven, there is no cross-access easement. But the intent is that they would drive it. Now, the applicant probably does not intend on selling these lots, but we've put in our staff comments that we want to identify a larger cross-access easement, so that there would be access to the back of the lot for this one and the ones that are adjacent to it. The design is similarly laid out as the current ones that are under construction out at the project. The main one at the top is what would face Reeves Road, and then the back portion of the lot and the sides. And you can see a little bit better from here, all of the areas. And this incorporates the, and I always forget what IMP stands for, but it's a metal wall panel that they have used and has been allowed in their PID. Their PID actually had this particular picture involved in it. And so, on that side, you'll notice there's a little bit of side detailing column colors that staff has requested, so that some of that architecture does wrap onto the side that would be visible by the right-of-way. And then, just to give you a context, so this is the planned development, and that lot seven is right down here on the backside of the residential road that, back when the PID was approved, a large wall that is already in place, sound wall, and landscape buffer are already in location behind this lot seven. And then, it is speculative at this time, but these are the permitted uses within that zone. This is what they call Region Two. So, any of the uses checkmarked in Region Two would be those uses that they could actually put within the building, I believe. And then, here's what was in the PID book initially, which is very similar to what's actually being built out. The only difference is, is this is two buildings instead of one. Lot seven again is in this location. And again, it's two separate buildings, which is probably better just for access. And I believe, yes, Mr. Swanson is, Joe Junior is in the audience, should you have any questions on this project. But it's generally in good, good order, so long as staff comments are followed.
Questions, concerns, comments?
You have the, the name Smutman wall on that?
If there are no questions, I'll make a motion, we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have Mason Brook Preliminary Platte for 51 lots on 19.2 acres, Zoned CF and RS6, located along Florence Road. Alcorn Properties LLC is the developer. Mr. Aguilera.
Thank you again, Chair Jones. Today, this item that we're going to be discussing for your review and considerations, the Preliminary Platte for Mason Brook. This item was previously heard at the November 17th Planning Commission Public... This item was previously heard at the November 17 Planning Commission Public Hearing, in which we discussed the annexation and zoning of this to a portion to be CF and RS6. There was a lot of discussion during that time at the public hearing to discuss the alley, the setbacks from the alley, the elevations of the detached homes, and then as well as the proposed timeline of Cherry Lane. And so, we're going to be touching a little bit about that today, but just wanted to discuss again, because there was, again, some significant discussion about setbacks from the alley and the design. With the RS6 zoning, though we really don't have design guidelines for single-family detached homes, RS6 does give you some additional standards about the setbacks for garages and the homes using some brick-stone, I think brick-stone or cementous siding. And so, that is going to be discussed later on and enforced throughout this process with the final platte and when the individual homes apply for permits. And so, as shown in the preliminary platte, Mason Brook has 51 lots, two commercial lots zoned, Commercial Friends CF, and 49 residential lots zoned RS6. On the residential portion, there will be a Type A, Type A landscape buffer along the southern boundary, located around here, and that's just, again, just to provide some screening from the other existing neighborhoods. And we have worked with Mr. Alcorn and Mr. Melson to ensure that there is adequate screening around these areas and around the detention ponds. Staff also worked to make sure that these individual RS6 lots are compliant with the RS6 standards and that they are to comply with, end note, 29 setbacks for garages and for the house. Again, hitting home that we want to make sure that these are properly set back from the alleys and from Cherry Lane, which is, again, to be a five-lane major arterial. And as shown on the platte, this, Cherry Lane is, again, to be a major arterial that will bisect the Mason Brook subdivision from Northwest Broad Street to Florence, and then, of course, continuing on. Cherry Lane is listed as a long-term improvement project in the major transportation plan, and with this being a five-lane roadway improvement project, city staff was able to work with the developer to ensure that the sidewalk, alley, and multi-use path components are going to be developed by developer in time for future residents. For Cherry Lane specifically, and as you can see here on the screen, there was, we worked with the developer to ensure that when this is developed, that the framing will be in place for it for street access and connectivity. It's going to be first developed as a fine-lane frame, and then it will be tapered down to two lanes, again, for street access and connectivity. The city, the city has entered into an agreement to develop the remaining lanes of Cherry Lane, and the details of that schedule are still being worked on, but it, again, is slated for improvement and for the rest of the remaining lanes to be put in place. There are several outstanding engineering comments that still need to be addressed, but other than that, we find that this platte to be in good order, but we'll ask you that you approve this subject to all staff comments to ensure that the comments for engineering are addressed. I'm here for any questions, if you have any, and I believe the applicant is here as well. Thank you.
If there are none, I'll make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Next, we are moving on to new business. We'll be scheduling public hearings on these items. The first one is a zoning application for approximately 19.5 acres to be rezoned from RS15 to RS8, and approximately six acres to be rezoned from RS15 CF, located along Franklin Road. Beazer Homes applicant, Ms. Rush.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. This is under the new business section of our agenda. Staff is going to ask for that this item be scheduled for a public hearing. Bit of an overview of this project, it is two parcels that are, excuse me, there are two parcels that are part of this application. The first one is 23.5 acres and is proposed for the RS8 zoning district, and then along the frontage of Franklin Road to go to CF zoning district. Both of these properties are within the city limits currently, and they're both currently zoned RS15. The contiguous parcel to the east, just the front portion along Franklin Road is proposed for the, I'm sorry, for the CF zoning. The remainder of that parcel would, would stay as the RS15 zoning district. The purpose of this request from Beazer Homes is, of course, to construct single-family homes on the property. So as a bulk zoning district, they would be allowed to build single-family homes on lots that are at least the, are 8,000 square foot size lot minimums. With our sewer allocation ordinance, it does limit single-family lots to, or single-family density to three units per acre, so regardless of the zoning, they would still be limited to that. In terms of the CF zoning district, they would match the district on the property to the west that was recently rezoned. The CF zoning district is the district that is commonly used adjacent to residential. Those are the commercial uses that are generally less nuisance if located next to residence, and they do have additional standards, such as if it was a gas station with petroleum sales, it would have to meet a minimum distance, or if it's a menu board with a drive-in restaurant, there's also minimum distance standards that are there. The future land use map, our current one that's approved, depicts this entire property as a general commercial. I'll show that in the mountain here, in red. When this future land use map was done, approximately 2017, it was pretty much assumed that a lot of these parcels would develop with commercial, and the map oftentimes just followed the property line itself. But what we found is with these larger, deeper parcels from major roadways, it's very difficult to construct a lot of the commercial uses that we typically see here. So with the proposed draft that the staff is working on, we've studied this area and have concluded that it would be probably more appropriate if the city decides that that's the direction it wants to go to for general commercial along Franklin Road and a residential zoning district that's more similar to the houses that are located to the north of this property for the remainder of the property. So this is just a general summary. The applicant's representative, Mr. Matt Taylor, is here to answer any questions if you, if the commission so desires. Staff is asking for a July 13 public hearing for this item, and I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Would you like us to go ahead and ask about July 13? Do you want to wait until the end of the meeting?
Yeah, well, I think, I think we probably need to broach the subject now because since we're scheduling. I did message Mr. Wright, who's out of the country, and he said he will be here on July Received an email from Ms. Everwater that she would be present at our next public hearing. She didn't specifically say that she would be here on July 13, but that she would be here at the next meeting. So we do have, if, I guess we will need to confirm that we will have a quorum. I know Ms. Jones and Mr. Halliburton, y'all will not be available on July the 13th. Mr. Lance, Mr. Russell, Mr. Salas, will y'all be available on that evening?
Well, I think I might.
We thought we were doing good. We're here on the 6th, but nobody else is coming on.
Or should I say Chairman Pro Tem Russell? Would you be...
Yeah.
I think I'll be here.
Okay, so, so it sounds like we would have five for that evening.
Four or five, depending on if Ms. Everwater knows it's on the 13th as opposed to the 6th. Okay, good, we're good for the 13th then, or some of y'all are good for the 13th. Let's load them up. What are we going to put up?
Looks like several. And for one of the subsequent items on the agenda, we're trying to schedule a public, or a neighborhood meeting, and so that will give us additional time to get a neighborhood meeting scheduled and conducted before that public hearing.
Matthew, is there still a council workshop scheduled for that day also?
Yeah.
But there is, so, so this would be later, later in the afternoon, like a three o'clock meeting?
This is a 6.
Six.
It'd be public hearings.
6:00 P.M.
Oh, okay, all right.
It'd be a 6:00 P.M. meeting.
So there shouldn't be any conflict with the, with the workshop unless it runs really, really long.
I'm just going to ask on this item, since I won't be here to ask later, you mentioned that there was a three-unit-per-acre sewer allocation for this property. Did I, did I write that down right? What was that?
With the city sewer allocation ordinance for single-family detached, it allows up to three houses per acre. So even with the RS8, which is an 8,000 square foot lot, you'd still be looking at that same number of units per acre.
Three. Subject to saying the same number, being three?
Three.
So, why do you need to rezonate?
RS15, they could, they could really only achieve, really, two units. Once you factor in detention, roadways, they could really only achieve two units, and plus the 8,000 square foot lot minimum would give them a lot more additional flexibility in how they design those lots.
And the green space.
And it's adjacent to RS8. Is that what I'm seeing on?
That's correct. That was the Milton property that was zoned RS8 and CF in a, in a very similar fashion just last year.
Which one is that? What, what's the adjacent property that's on that way?
The property to the west was done by Lennar Homes, and it was...
Spinnelli Way or something?
Yes.
All that, Spinnell Way?
All those, basically to the left, on our...
This is, this is almost an identical request to that, to that request to the west.
Okay. One of the reasons why we've also had them add that additional piece on the adjacent lot to the east for commercial is so that the city can have the roadway connection across from Rucker. Katie was here a moment ago, I was going to say she could speak to that if you have any questions about that. But that was one of the, the key issues that we really were looking for as these properties are developing. So there you are. You changed seats. They are including that extra piece so that we can get that connection with the bulk zoning. We don't necessarily have a layout set in stone on this, but we are asking and they are willing to provide that fourth leg of the intersection at Rucker and Franklin Road. And I believe that other development was called Windgate.
And that will allow that residential, the existing residential traffic to the north with Smitty Drive, Garcia Boulevard, to get down to a signalized intersection, have a direct route down to that signalized intersection via the fourth leg of that Rucker Lane intersection.
So, I think they're requesting a public hearing on July 13. Anybody has any further questions? And if not, we're ready for a motion.
Please approve.
Which is a public hearing on July 13.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and I'm told our item B has been withdrawn at this time, and so on item C, we have a zoning application for approximately 10.8 acres located at 2655 Wilkinson Pike to be rezoned from RS15 MU GDO1 and GDO2 to PRD GDO1 and GDO2. Toll Brothers at Gateway, Toll Brothers is the applicant. Ms. Green.
Good afternoon, thank you. Our next item under new business is a request for you to schedule a public hearing to consider an application for rezoning the planning department's received. The property is known to most of us as the Beulah Hale property. I say it to make sure it doesn't sound like I'm saying Hale property. And it is located south of Wilkinson Pike. It will be north of the future Willow Oak Trail Extension. This property is currently Zoned Mixed Use District and RS15. The area that's Zoned Mixed Use District is also Zoned Gateway Design Overlay District One, GDO1, and the area that's blue on the map that's Zoned RS15 is Zoned GDO2 Gateway Design Overlay District Two. The property is also subject to the Wilkinson Pike buffer, which is a buffer described in our zoning ordinance that has a distance of 100 feet south of Wilkinson Pike, meant to serve as additional separation and transition from the more intense city developments going toward the unincorporated area to the north, which consists mostly of single-family detached lots. Stones River Battlefield is here. The, let's see, the Villages of Murphy Square Memory Care and Independent Living Facility is here, and then Clary Park is all these properties. And so, it is, of course, one of the last larger pieces of property along this Wilkinson Pike corridor that we've probably been anticipating development for. The property itself is 10.77 acres, and it does have a single-family detached, or single-family house on it. That single-family house has been vacant for several years. The, here's an ortho photo so that you can see the development. The apartments that you see there is on mixed use are a part of the Henley Station development. Henley Station's Zoned both mixed use and PRD and consists of almost 600 apartment units. This request is for you to approve an application for Planned Residential District. So unlike the current zoning mixed-use district, which would require a mixture of uses, including office, commercial, institutional, and then allow high-dense residential development, they're not proposing a, a commercial component to this development, so they're strictly wanting to do residential community here. The request is to rezone mixed-use and RS15 to PRD. However, the property would remain within the Gateway Design Overlay District, so they would not be making an application to remove the Gateway Design Overlay District. The applicants did hold a neighborhood meeting at the Embassy Suites, invite neighbors to come speak, which, of course, we anticipate they would come to the public hearing as well. Some of those concerns that we're familiar with are regarding Wilkinson Pike, the condition of the street, improvements to Wilkinson Pike, and opportunities to address rainwater for this property and adjacent properties. This property, as I mentioned, was not included in the application from Mr. Tommy Smith in 2013 to remove a portion of the Wilkinson Pike buffer, so the entire buffer does apply to this property. However, the planned development does request to allow some development within that Wilkinson Pike buffer. The plan is for, turn my page, 77 townhomes and 27 single-family small lots. So it's about 74% townhomes and 26 single-family detached. The development itself, they're still working through the details of the plan, and we've been meeting with the applicant and their representatives. Some of the comments that we shared with the adjacent Clary Park, felt remiss not sharing those with these townhomes as well. Some of the things we discussed were raised foundations, a minimum 18-inch raised foundations, specialty lots with wraparound porches, streetscape treatments, porches, stoops, amenity areas. This development does seem most like our RSA Type, Type III urban townhouse that's in the zoning ordinance. We've asked for them to do some more work to the architecture. We've asked for them to really look at creating the active amenity area or the, here, creating a more developed plan with more thought, thought-through amenities. As proposed, they do have some amenities, but they really need to have more. They weren't open to the idea of a pool like we see next door, and so really need them to invest in that, and they, they've expressed a commitment to do that and come back to staff with something, a more robust active amenity area. Formal open space is different than active amenity area. Formal open space is just a minimum standard of 5% that applies in the gateway. Active amenity areas are in their design guidelines and apply to developments generally with six or seven, have a density of six or seven dwelling units per acre, and they could include playgrounds, parks, pocket parks, tennis courts, pools, and those sorts of things. And... And those amenities are typically what you see as a trade-off for density. You increase density, but you create spaces for the community to spend time. And so they have committed to working on that. The architecture is well. Just this morning, we continued to meet with applicants who are Toll Brothers, and I'm sure they'll introduce themselves to us. We don't have any communities in Murfreesboro built by or developed by them, so they're new to our community. And so this also is serving as, I think, an introduction to Murfreesboro, and we've shared with them our values here and what's important to us. They are proposing to phase the development from Wilkinson Pike down. Clary Park and Hines are doing a turn lane into their development, and so we've asked that just be a continuous turn lane into this development, so they also have a turn lane here. And then the second phase is what's closest to Willow Oak Trail. That Willow Oak Trail extension is part of the Clary Park Master Plan and PUD, and so they're planning to build that within a certain timeframe. Of course, this development does rely on that extension, so if they wanted to move forward ahead of time, they would be on the hook for building that road. But the planning, our expectation of things moving forward is that that Phase 2 will come after Willow Oak Trail is already constructed. We always like to talk about the exceptions that are a part of a planned development. Planned developments, of course, are an opportunity to have creative design and allow something that you would not normally be able to achieve. As such, sometimes exceptions are needed, or sometimes they just want to request exceptions to have a community develop a particular way. So here, the exceptions, of course, are to allow these single-family detached homes, which are these, that front on Wilkinson Pike, to be within that Wilkinson Pike buffer, but they're proposing to build a berm like the adjacent property has. The berm is not something that's required in the zoning ordinance. It was a trade-off that Mr. Tommy Smith made to reduce that area. He posted that berm, so they'd like to extend that berm and fencing. And so to allow that. And then in single-family detached, you can't allow garages to count toward your minimum parking like you can with townhomes, but in this case, they would like the ability to do that. And then with developments of 75 townhomes or more, you're required to put in a trash compactor. They'd like to not do a compactor, but do a private service, and so that's one of the exceptions. That'll be a part of the plan. And then the, let's see. There's some setbacks.
Single family.
Okay. There's some exceptions for the setback for the single-family, and so that's the other exception. I would just point out to you, and I think Ms. Taylor will want to do this in his presentation, there's single-family fronting along Willow Oak Trail and single-family detached, they keep calling it single-family, but they both are, and then single-family here. And then what's in the middle is the townhomes. They are actively working on the project and addressing the comments that we've provided to them. They feel confident that they can have everything together in time for a July 13th public hearing, so the request will be for you to schedule that public hearing for July 13th. Prior to doing so, they would like to present their application to you.
I don't have a formal presentation.
I'll go over it at the public hearing after all of our revisions with Margaret Ann, so we had a good meeting earlier today to go over those and get on the same page. So I'll be happy to answer any questions about the project, though, that you might have.
I don't have any questions.
I move we schedule a public hearing July 13th.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item D, this is an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 0.9 acres located along Elam Road. Swanson Developments LP is the applicant. Ms. Smith?
Good afternoon again, Commissioner. This particular item, I'll go back to you. You may have recalled in the beginning, this particular area, we were talking about a planned industrial development on a earlier item. This shows the existing boundary of that PID, and you'll notice one parcel down here at the bottom that they're proposing for annexation. Originally, the map that you saw actually separated out these two components as we thought we may want to just look at Elam Road as we're going through the process, but maybe not provide a formal plan of services. After having an internal meeting, a secondary internal meeting with staff, it was determined that we really do want to look at those two together in tandem with one another. And as we look at your next item, which will be the rezone, as this is being submitted concurrently with a amendment to that PID, staff would like to see future connectivity from the end of, and you see it just barely here on your screen, logistics way is being constructed as we speak. And after having that internal meeting, because this street goes so far into the subdivision, we'd like to see that coming at some point tying into Elam Road because currently only Jovi Jackson is the way to access this, and it's almost more than a mile into the subdivision of the PID. So what we would like to do is, this area from Highway 24 over to Manchester Pike is approximately 3,700 feet. And then there is currently a TDOT right-of-way along the frontage road that currently accesses a billboard. This parcel is in the city limits, but believe it or not, the small little frontage road along Highway 24 is not. So we would like to add, as shown on the map that I believe Mr. Blomley just handed out, set a annexation hearing for the 13th of July. And as you'll notice on this, the other reason we're looking at this is Manchester Pike. In this section, north of Elam Road is scheduled in our long-range transportation plan to go to three lanes. It's currently two lanes today. And when the school was built in this location, there were some improvements made to this intersection. So that's one of the reasons we'd like to look at it. And number two, as development continues to come north, south into the subdivision, really having a secondary access point, we'd like to take a look at. So with that, the applicant is here for consideration, but we would like to include both of these areas as part of the public hearing and plan of services for that parcel.
And as Ms. Smith alluded to, the maps that I handed out are the updated ones. What we would request that you schedule for the public hearing, and so if you do, we'll advertise it with that updated area.
So the .9, then plus this roadway that you're adding in?
Correct, correct. And we haven't calculated the exact acreage of the right-of-way. I believe it's the length of Elam Road from Manchester Pike to the Interstate Bridge is about 4,000 feet, and the little frontage road is about 1,900 feet. So because of the connection that we are seeking in the, as a part of the PID amendment down to Elam Road, and the anticipated, you know, and we don't know what the improvements to Elam Road will be at the time that connection's made, but anticipating that there will be some kind of improvements, getting that right-of-way in our jurisdiction, we think, is appropriate since the traffic generated will be by the development that will be connecting to it.
And we would be scheduling neighborhood meetings before the public hearing as well.
All right. Any questions or are you ready to schedule a public hearing?
I'm going to have some questions, but I'll hold off on them. I'll ask you between now and the public hearing, and we'll just get it in the public hearing or before that. So I'll move, we set the public hearing July 13th.
Second.
And for the two areas?
Yep, yep. Not only the .9, but the updated area.
Updated map?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion in second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next item is a zoning application to amend the Parkway Place PID on approximately 151 acres located along Jovi Jackson Parkway and Richard Reeves Drive, and to zone approximately 0.9 acres located along Elam Road to PID simultaneous with annexation. Swanson Developments LP, and again, Ms. Smith.
Well, hello again. This is a kind of a companion to the site. If you look on the screen, the entire PID is outlined here in blue and includes the area all the way up. Sometimes it's a little hard to see. That area, and then it adds the one additional parcel. The updated map, we didn't previously show this area up at the top. That actually is part of the PID, so that updated map shows that particular area in place. As we were looking at some general information to give you an update on this, it is current land use designated suburban residential across this frontage and suburban estate on this southerly section. When we're looking at the proposed land use map that we are not done in our review process, the existing PID shows all industrial. I think we may have to make an adjustment here because it's already part of a existing planned industrial development, but it currently shows as a residential use. And then at the farthest south side, it actually showed as a public-private-institutional use, and that's because for a number of years, there used to be a church building that was there. It's been vacant for a number of years and is no longer on the site. And so those particular areas, when the Planning Commission does review it, you would have to look at the appropriateness of adding that one parcel to the existing PID. And then, of course, this is already part of the PID to the north, but as you do that zoning concurrent with the annexation, you would need to make that determination. And here you can see a little bit further which portion is part of the annexation, all the other is within the property lines. As part of the project, we have gotten a initial plan booklet provided for the property. If you go to page eight, it provides the overall summary of what's being requested as shown on the screen. So you see all the pretty colors. As part of it, they're looking at modifying, of course, that parcel to the south. If it's annexed into city limits, that it would become part of their, what's called Region 4. And each of the regions in this plan book has different height limitations, setbacks, landscape buffers, architectural components. And so as you'll notice, here is reflected approved buildings already. This one here in Region 3 is under construction. Region 4 was recently approved at the beginning of this year. Lot 7, you had looked at earlier this evening. Lot 8 is coming back to you in about a month. So when we're looking at all of these components together, back to that internal meeting, currently, about a month ago when we first met with them, because this cul-de-sac here is longer than our city standard, and at the time, we did not show a full exiting point. They included an exception to the maximum cul-de-sac length, but as of yesterday, when internal staff met further, what we would like to do is not see that particular exception and instead plan for connectivity back down to Elam Road. That's part of the plan of services. There's a lot of information that needs to be collected. We need to talk to the neighbors. And this goes back, I think, the original PID was approved, I think, back in 2006 or 2008 for this particular project. The other things that they're looking at as part of their PID modifications is some of the area over here. That teal-colored green is those areas that are ponding areas. That lighter green was anticipated as a ponding area, but because of development on this site was no longer needed, so this small parcel here is looked at for adding it to one of the regions. I believe it's Region 3 from Region 2. Number 2, they're looking at the lines between Regions 3 and 4 are being adjusted to match already-approved roadways. And then they are looking at some changes in their use tables. Staff is still working with the applicant. There's about six uses that we're not on the same page with, but we believe that by the time we're with your public hearing and a revised, updated plan book, that we will be on the same page. And I believe that's on page 13 or 18 of the program book. It's really, really tiny, so you've got to zoom in. But with that, make sure I've covered everything. So just to give you an overall view, so this is the existing approved development to date. Again, you can see that logistics way coming through into this section. This is, I don't know, 800,000-square-foot building being built, 300,000 square feet here. And then here's the logistics way currently. I think at one point during their preliminary plat in 2020, they anticipated it coming further south and serving into this site. So the difference here would be connecting it all the way to the end point so that you don't have an incident occur here and no other way out for all of those approved buildings and future buildings that will be approved. And then this is just, you know, the touchdown on that particular location. There is this frontage road. That's the TDOT right-of-way. And then Elam Road, which is a county road, two-lane road that was built by TDOT, just so you have that for reference. So with that background information, the applicant is here, but that's where staff is moving towards. But if you have any questions before you set the public hearing, to make sure that staff addresses those concerns as part of our study. We're looking at sending out all the stakeholder letters tomorrow, but we wanted to make sure Planning Commission was informed of these items. And any questions you have, I'm more than happy to try to answer.
Okay. Any questions on this before we set a public hearing?
I'll move we set a public hearing for July 13th.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Oh, thank you. All right. Our next item is an annexation petition request for service as an outside-the-city sewer customer for approximately one acre located at 3905 Ashley Drive. Casey Nunley is the owner. Ms. Rush, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. For this particular request, it is for to provide sewer service to an outside-the-city-limits property. The applicant has experienced severe problems with their septic system. It has continued to fail and is not repairable. There is some documentation that was included in your attachments, both from the state of Tennessee and then also from her septic company inspector, just confirming that that is the particular situation. So she is asking to get sewer service from the city and would be an outside-the-city sewer service. And there are provisions within the regulations that do allow for this for public health, safety, and welfare, which this would qualify. Now, the commission, if you wish to have this property to be studied for annexation, you could direct staff for that, and it would require a public hearing, and we would need to prepare a plan of services. And we could bring that to the public hearing in July. If, after your discussion, you feel that outside-the-city service is something appropriate in this case, it would just be referred then to the City Council for their action. I'm happy to answer any questions, the property owners here and the audience who can respond to any questions as well. Thank you.
Yeah, with Sean not being here particularly, I'm a little hesitant just to kind of try to give you guys what I think ultimately the City Council would be, you know, sort of the vision of the council is without him being here. I hate to say that, but everything I've heard, and I don't know, does this, would this be one of the, and I'm sorry, I just don't, can't keep all this straight, but is it, if we, if you do an outside-the-city sewer, does that ever make it to council, or does it just end here?
I believe so.
I believe so.
It would make it to council. We would, if you recommended approval for it, we would likely bring it to council next Thursday, the 23rd. And let me kinda give you our thought process on this. You know, we have been discouraging outside-the-city sewer customers, but it's my understanding and Mr. Rives or Mr. Hankins may be able to shed some more light on this. I believe there is a clause that states that we can still bring these to you if there is a prevailing public health, safety, or welfare issue. It's my understanding from Ms. Nunley, she has not been able to live in her house since right after Christmas and that she has tried just about everything that she could try to get back in her house. Sewer is going to be available with the construction of the Magnolia Grove subdivision directly to the north of the subject property. So there are still some logistics that she has to work out with the developer of Magnolia Grove to extend sewer to her property. But considering the circumstances, considering that it's been five months since she's been able to live in her house, that there could be negative environmental impacts from her failing septic tank, that it was the opinion of staff that this warranted consideration for an outside-the-city sewer service approval.
So what I was gonna say was just basically, you know, that I think what I've been hearing the council say is we're kinda, these are our kind of a no-go. Obviously, there are reasons and I think the natural, you know, the natural thought processes here is try to help. And certainly, you know, I mean, I feel that myself. My question is, I guess what I'm trying to, I'm trying to format this the right way because you can just sort of see where this is gonna head, right, through our process into the council and we wanna try to head off as much as we can. My question, I guess, is mainly, I saw the word annexation. I heard her say annexation. Why aren't we just annexing it? Why isn't the landowner just asking to annex the property so that they can take advantage of all the services that we offer that would be right next door?
Well, by city code, they have to request annexation. They have to petition the city for annexation to be considered for outside-the-city sewer service. So it's at the discretion of the Planning Commission whether or not you want to study it for annexation or approve her as an outside-the-city sewer customer. Knowing the situation that she is in and also knowing that the, there's limited benefit to the city for us to annex this property. The rest of her subdivision is still in the county. I mean, the property is directly adjacent to the city limits, but her street is in the county. Her, you know, if we served her with a garbage truck or a fire truck, we'd have, you know, we'd bring the garbage truck down her street that no one else is gonna be served off of it. And she'll still pay higher fees to be served as an outside-the-city sewer customer, but we won't have to provide her with other, with the full complement of city services.
What's going on on the property directly to the east of Ashley Drive? The one where the words "city limits" are currently written, that block?
It is, it's in the unincorporated county and I'm not aware of any plans to develop it.
So where's the, is the sewer coming across the road?
Yes, coming from the north.
Okay.
That's the Magnolia Grove single-family subdivision that's currently under development.
And I mean, these are the other questions I was just thinking. I think the council will also ask is, I mean, as far as from a cost perspective to run the sewer, I mean, do we pay that and then the citizen pays the tap fee or how is the cost piece gonna work? What's the fiscal impact?
Yeah, she'll bear the cost. So, and that's something that she'll have to work out with the developer of Magnolia Grove. You know, obviously depending on the timing of when he brings sewer down to Jurgen Road with his, with Section One, Phase Two of his development, you know, it may be that she's gonna have to acquire a sewer easement if it's not, if the sewer isn't down to Jurgen Road at that point. But she would bear that expense. The city would not be extending that sewer for her.
So just for some frame of reference too, just for you guys, I mean, I have, you know, gotten over the last eight years, a number of requests of people who say, hey, please run the sewer to our house. This is obviously a different circumstance. That's just people who don't want to have their septic, you know, system maintenance and it's obviously a better system, the sewer system is. So we just need to make sure we take that count. I don't know exactly how, but I mean, the other houses on Ashley Drive, are they gonna start it?
Well, I guess that's my question is, is this is the only house that has a septic issue?
It's the only one that we've been contacted about. So as far as the documentation that she has submitted regarding her failed septic tank, our Water Resources Department has reviewed that and as staff, we are, you know, we are in support of this application based on the documentation that she's submitted to us that her septic tank is a no-go for repair.
I'd like to add that her, Casey's actually an acquaintance of mine. Her attorney reached out to me several months ago with this issue. I directed them to the planning at that time, but the only point of me saying this is just to say that I know this is an issue that's been going on for her for a while. It's something I feel like if we have the power to help her out with, it would be something terrific to do. And that's all, that's all I'm gonna say on that.
And the area across the road to the north that's developing right now?
That's correct.
And that's developing as a city subdivision or an outside-the-city?
As a city subdivision. And Ms. Nunley is in the audience today. If you have any questions regarding specifics about the issues she's been experiencing with her septic tank or any other issues?
I'm in favor of setting the public hearing. I wanna try to help. I'm just gonna kinda say between now and the public hearing timeframe, even though there may not be a big benefit for this being in the city, I think the benefit, like in terms of trash pickup and, you know, it's not gonna be enough taxes for us to worry about the taxes and it's no, you know, I mean, that may not feel the same for her, but I mean, for us, it's not that, it's gonna be negligible. But what I'll say is, from a precedent standpoint, it would be extremely valuable, I believe, for it to be annexed. Just from a standpoint of saying, what everybody else, I mean, if the entire Ashley Drive, and I was trying to pull it up on my Google map, but I couldn't get it pulled up here. But, you know, ultimately, we know one day what's gonna happen to that block of property to the east. I mean, probably like some 90-something percent chance, I'd say. They're gonna want sewer. It's gonna be there across the road already. You know, this is gonna start this, and I'm just kinda saying, I think annexation is probably the best route here. So I'm in favor of the planning, the public hearing. I'm in favor of trying to help because it sounds like it makes a heck of a lot of sense. I just want everybody to be thinking about that between now and then.
The only difference is, is with annexation, that increases the duration of time for the process by about four months. So it's with the outside-the-city sewer approach, and we're certainly happy to do whatever Planning Commission wishes with outside-the-city sewer customer approval. It does not require a public hearing by Planning Commission or council. If, annexation would require a public hearing by Planning Commission and one by council as well.
So is there, I get what you're saying and definitely wanna try to help. So is there a way to, and I'm just making this up, y'all can attorney it, but she signs an agreement that we agree to do this, but that she signs an agreement that she'll petition to be annexed within a certain timeframe?
And maybe we make it a temporary?
She already has petitioned to be annexed. That's a part of the process. She has to petition and then we have a choice. We, the city, have a choice to annex her and give her sewer or to serve her as an outside-the-city sewer customer.
But you're saying if we choose the annexation route, that's four months longer? Is that what you're telling me?
Yeah, but how long is it really gonna take?
Can't we just go ahead and approve her as outside-the-city sewer customer, which she gets right now, and continue on with the annexation process?
Yeah, that's where I'm going.
It'll be four months longer, but still in the meantime, she still gets served.
I don't think we can do both.
Yeah.
Oh, come on. Y'all can figure that out. That's where we're trying to get.
Yeah.
Are you telling me though, that with the project that's going on today and how long is it actually gonna take to get the sewer over there anyway?
Yeah, that was a question I had too.
If it's gonna take four months anyway, we haven't lost anything.
Yeah, there's certainly gonna be some time and expense in getting the sewer to her property.
Right.
I don't know if she's had conversations with Han Development of Magnolia Grove about the logistics. She's shaking her head no.
That would be something that would be, if it's really gonna take four months anyway to get the project implemented, go through the process, let's do it right and be done with it.
How about this idea too, from a standpoint of, and I thought, just to make sure I'm square on this, I thought you said we did not have to go through the public hearing process here plus council? Did you, is that just the plus coun, if we just do outside-the-city?
If you do, if you do outside-the-city sewer service, there's no public hearing at Planning Commission, there's no public hearing at council if?
So we're not setting a public hearing?
Only if there's annexation, only if there's annexation. If it's approved as an outside-the-city, if you recommend approval as an outside-the-city sewer customer, it would then go to council next Thursday, who could potentially issue final approval next Thursday. So it could be over by June 23rd.
And council could back up and say, no, we wanna consider this for annexation.
Yeah, there are a lot of variables that could go into it, but as far as the annexation process, you'd be looking at a July 13th Planning Commission public hearing, probably an early September city council public hearing. So roughly, roughly three to four months is when the, is, sometime in September probably was when it would be complete.
Here's gonna be my, this would be my thoughts on this, is that we would schedule a public hearing for the annexation and that, because it sounds like we can address this relatively quickly with the outside-the-city sewer, not necessarily doing it today. There are variables that we don't know in terms of when it can physically get done. So for today, what I would do is set it up for a public hearing for the annexation on July 13th. And then we, I think we would all have the knowledge that they can start going to work on figuring out with the developer. We'll be going along our process and if it looks like it's gonna end up taking us, and I'm just being a little extreme here, but you know, it looks like it's gonna take us six months to get this annexation through. The developer can do it tomorrow and everybody on the council starts to tell you guys and, you know, y'all might start talking to some council members and everybody just says, nah, let's just get it done and forget it, leave it out, or, you know, I mean, then we just go do it. We just do it at our next meeting.
If you, if you?
We could do the outside-the-sewer, outside-the-city sewer in any meeting, it sounds like. I mean, we just knock that out, no problem.
You could schedule the, you could schedule it for an annexation Plan of Services, an annexation public hearing for July 13th. And then at that meeting, after reviewing the data that comes back in the Plan of Services, you could either vote to approve it as an outside-the-city sewer customer at that meeting or you could move the annexation on to council. So if you didn't feel comfortable making that decision today and you wanted to see what the Plan of Services would yield, we could certainly, you could certainly reevaluate at that July 13th meeting as well.
Is July 13th our next Planning Commission meeting period?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I was gonna say, we'll do one better, just advertise it again before and if we have another one, but.
And is it still true that if, anytime we do approve anyone for an outside-the-city sewer customer, that if we agree to do that, they sign something that says that should we ever attempt to annex their property, they would agree? Didn't that used to be part of the process?
We have done that.
She's already agreed.
We have, we have done that on other projects, yes, where?
So just because once they get the sewer, then they can't ever, you know, there are, we're doing something to help them along if we ever get ready to annex.
Well, that would fix the, that would fix our issue, wouldn't it?
I thought we couldn't annex anyone without them requesting it. I know she's requesting it now, but if, so the issue would be if you did that, the outside-the-city sewer customer that was approved and she sold her house or, well, and then if she never came back and asked for a request to be annexed, then the city doesn't have the right to annex it at that point.
I think that we could structure that as a continuing request.
Okay.
So could we then, I'm sorry, but I gotta, I gotta leave like one minute from now.
Go for it.
The idea being here that if we could, could we simultaneously today approve the outside-the-city sewer and set the public hearing for an annexation? Because she's agreed that it's gonna happen one day or another, we can go ahead and give her some, and I don't know if it's a family, so I keep, you're the only one in the audience, so I keep saying her, but we give her the go-ahead, she can start talking knowing it's gonna happen, and then we set the annexation so we know that process has started too and we know that she's already agreed by accepting the outside-the-city sewer, she's agreed to be annexed if we ask, which we're asking. Who's on first? Does that make sense?
All the attorneys looking at each other over there.
I thought they had a request to be annexed.
I'm sorry? She did, didn't she?
That's new.
Unless they agree to it. I'm good, whatever. It's like, just listen. But I think we've got a little bit of time. If we set the public hearing, that gives us a month for them to get their stuff going. It gives us a little time. And then if we come back in a month from now and all the annexation stuff is out the window and we decide we wanna do it, we do it and it's done.
That makes more sense.
All right.
I think, I believe.
That's gonna be my motion, is to set the public hearing for July 13th. You have, okay, all right, yeah, for July 13th then and we'll move along with that and we'll get, we'll get this thing going one way or another.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, staff reports and other business.
First of all, I apologize for the short notice on the fair housing training this week that just was scheduled kind of quickly, but I did wanna mention, since most of y'all will not be able to make it tomorrow morning, is that we will be having a second session of that later on this summer and we'll let you know. And like I mentioned in my email, that can count towards your state-required continuing education. Also, I'll continue to be sending you new opportunities as they come along. The Planning Commissioner Board of Zoning Appeals training that occurred this past Monday morning that Ms. Jones watched, I think they're gonna be having a recording of that. So I'll be sending out a link for that in case you wanted to watch that as well. So any questions about continuing education, let us know. We'll try to get you squared away.
I just wanna say that for the neighbor out here.
Casey.
Casey, if he told you to show up at 1:00, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
Hey, I'll take responsibility for that, Mr. Lance.
Oh, man, there's some value in this, I mean, to have to wait three hours.
Wait your. Matthew, is there something?
I'm sorry.
Your turn.